Should we redo the motion?
Sure, I mean.
I'm just thinking just so it's on the record.
That way everybody has it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to open the meeting, is there a second?
Second. Okay, roll call vote, trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Lamphier.
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Lightkit.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes. Wow, I got a sense of deja vu there.
Well, we had a little dress rehearsal. Well, good evening, everybody, and happy new year to everybody. Good to see you all. I would just like to read the conflict of interest disclosure. Does any board member have a disclosure regarding any relevant information or contact pertaining to any of the items on the agenda?
Lamphier, I do not.
Trustee Lightkit, I do not.
Stetser, I do not.
Keating, I do not.
The only contact I had, I did see, let's see, it's item number seven regarding 75 Monroe. Chris DiMarzo was in the building today. I did say hello to him and just said, I hope things are moving well with the boards. Just wanted to disclose that. It was nothing more than sort of a new year's greeting. Other than that, there's nothing else for me to disclose. Does any board member have a conflict of interest regarding any of the items on the agenda that is having a financial interest in the outcome of a vote on an item that is before you this evening?
I do not.
Lamphier, I do not.
I do not. Stetser?
I do not.
And I do not. Just as a matter of record, if a conflict of interest were to be identified, then the board member must recuse themselves from participating in any discussion or voting on the agenda item. At this point, I'd like the clerk to read the open meeting compliance certification.
Okay, the public will have opportunities to comment on specific agenda items when they occur in the meeting and also on general matters at the end of the meeting. Speakers can comment once in each comment window. If it is on a specific agenda item, it is not a debate, a deposition, or a panel discussion. If an attendee is participating via web conference technology such as Zoom, the clerk will announce how attendees should signal as they wish to comment. This may differ by platform, but typically accomplished through the raise the hand feature. We are actually using Zoom, so if you wish to comment, please hit the raise your hand. I will look for your commissary, you can put them in Q and A. I do not look at chat, so if you put your comments in chat, I will not see them and bring them to the board for discussion. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization. There shall be an exemption for any category of people protected by New York state law. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officers. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes on a given topic. Speakers may not yield any remaining time they may have to another speaker. Board members may, with the permission of the mayor, only interrupt a speaker during their remarks for the purpose of clarification or information. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or the representatives may address the board by written communications to the Village Clerk at villageofpittsburgh.com. All written communications will become part of the record, public record, and will be attached to the minutes for the meeting. At the sender's request, written communications will be read aloud by the clerk at the meeting and will adhere to the three-minute time rule. If printed materials or other media are provided by attendees during the meeting, they must be submitted to the village board with optional distribution to audience members. All materials will be part of the public record. Private distribution of materials to audience members only is prohibited.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll start with the building inspector's report. I believe you've all received that in your packet. And hi Steve. And are there any additional questions for Steve or any comments? Yes, Dan?
Yeah, so Steve, you mentioned you've been doing a bit of research to assist James Burton from TY Lynn with initial reviews for 75 Monroe. Can you give a little color there?
He's, he's been looking for some information regarding what approvals were done before, some of the meeting minutes in regards to seeker. And I actually sent some things over to him, but I actually informed him too that we have a very large box of information and offered him the opportunity to come and schedule a time when he could come and sit and peruse through the material. Because I mean, there is, there's a giant box of paperwork associated with 75 Monroe, so trying to figure out exactly where and what he wants is a little, is a little tough. So, but I have him back and forth. I've given him some different things as far as the site plan approval, the minutes from the meeting that was approved. And then I sent an email to him yesterday and I haven't heard back from him.
Did we direct TY Lynn to do anything regarding 75 Monroe, or is this one of the other subboards?
This is, this is TY Lynn trying to get enough information and do an initial estimate of what it will cost to review the project.
And I can answer that. That was a request from the planning and zoning board. They requested that they give an estimate from TY Lynn.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Steve or thoughts? I guess not. Well, thank you. Thanks, Steve. Anything you'd like to add or at this point or no?
No, no, I mean, there are items down the line, so I'll just be here watching and listening.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. The village attorney does not have a report this evening. He will be here shortly though, because he's going to be involved in some of the items on our agenda. Next up, the treasurer's report, please. Oh, Dorothy.
I'm sorry, were we skipping there?
Oh, we are. I'm sorry, I forgot. Yeah, you're right. Did you want us to hold off on your report? Dorothy.
Too much to report. It's been.
I skipped DPW, I'm sorry. I see what I just did. Yeah, okay. Zach, it's good to see you, by the way. Zach and his entire family have been out with COVID, but they're all on the rebound, so we're glad to have you back. Anyway, time in, please.
Um, we found salted when needed, as needed, cleaned garbage out of the woods out back. I think Jason was able to pull like three full garbage bags of garbage out of there. Vehicle maintenance, shop maintenance, cleaning house. We've had pre-staff go down with COVID in the last month, so it's, you know, just us trying to get through with limited staff. Got a new washer and dryer.
So that point, Zach, is Doug back?
Yes, Doug is back.
Great, great, thanks.
We also had Sean Darcy out. He was our new hire. He also was out with COVID, so we had, we were out three people. We were 50% down there for a while, so. Yep.
The fence on the path, the canal path nearby Sam Patch Hut, that had been blown over, knocked over a few times, so we cut the height of it down. So it's around about 34 inches now and put a cap on it to kind of dress it up. It looks a little bit better and it seems to be holding up a little better too. But we were doing some maintenance with that. Took down, organized, and put away the decorations. Most of them, we still have the wreaths up on the bridge and I'm going to be scheduling Jim Edwards and hopefully, hopefully Jim Edwards and his lift to come in to help us take that down soon. And I believe we are going to be leaving the lights up on the handrail for the time being, because everybody seems to enjoy them. And Wood Creek generator maintenance every, twice a year, maintenance, just preventative maintenance for the generator at Wood Creek happens. And it took place a couple of weeks ago and it got some upgrades for the 5G network for it to be able to send signals back and forth and it was a little added cost to the regular maintenance, but it was needed because 3G is no longer going to be supported, so we had to do that. And really, it's just about that. I don't have much else to report at this time.
Any, any questions for Zach? Thanks for just even being here. I know you've been down for the count, so appreciate it.
I have one quick question. My favorite topic to ask Zach about is, of course, the speed centuries, and I know that a driver hit one of our speed limit signs and took out our beloved speed century. Did we get some clarity on whether we can get reimbursed for that from insurance or? Did I, I don't know if Dorothy I heard back from.
Yeah.
We did, I'm sorry, Zach.
Go ahead, Dorothy.
We did receive the accident report. Unfortunately, they didn't give me the insurance information on the accident report, so that has been a follow-up. We actually need that insurance information.
Okay, so you haven't heard anything from Captain Elbert either?
Yeah. No.
Okay, I didn't see a ticket on there, so a citation, so it, I'm a little afraid that we won't be able to cover the cost, but.
No, I think we will, because they hit it. I think their insurance will cover it. I think we just need the insurance name. So it's the driver exchange form we didn't get that normally lists the insurance person involved, so once I get that, if not, we'll contact the person directly.
Okay, yes, Lily.
Thank you. I was going to bring this up under member items, but as since we're discussing accidents and insurance, the, exactly cement light pole on Monroe Avenue that was destroyed in the accident several months ago. We do have others to replace. We do have cement poles, right, to replace that pole. Are we out of those now?
No, we've, we've never carried those. Those have been an argini pole that they have furnished.
The cement, this historic cement fixture. Are you saying we don't have any more of those?
Yes, we've, our genie's always supplied and maintained those for us.
Okay. Argini owns that light? Am I correct, Argini owns that light?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so it was their responsibility?
Yep, and I reached out to them a few weeks ago and they said that there was a work order put out for it, but that's as far as it went again.
Yeah, I think things are sort of prolonged and slowed down, you know, just due to, you know, the COVID surge and things going on, so.
Yeah.
It's been a while. I agree, Lily. It looks terrible.
Yeah, and I think it's just somewhat dangerous as well, so perhaps we could send a little reminder to them that it needs to be replaced.
Well, reach out to them again.
Thanks, Zach. Sorry you were sick. Glad you're better.
That happens.
Okay, any other questions at this point? All right, thanks, Zach.
You're welcome.
Okay, now, the treasurer's report. Please.
Okay, I'll be happy to do it. I'm just seeing if Brooklyn is here. Normally, he gives the report. I do not see him, so I will go ahead. You received the treasurer's report. We're looking, it's abstract 17 for $61,831.69. Is there any questions and concerns?
Okay.
A few callouts on legal bills, 401, voucher 401.
Yep, we have the Zoglin bills.
And.
Like Osborne and Reed.
Are there any questions about that? Nope. I'll entertain a motion to approve the vouchers as presented.
Seconded.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lightkit.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Lamphier.
Lamphier, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Dorothy, a report?
I do not have a report. I was quiet in my world right now.
Oh, barely.
What I do have to cover will be further on in.
Okay, okay. Then we'll move on to minutes?
Yes, the board has two sets of minutes. When I added today, it was a real half the page. I hope it didn't add to your reading, but we have December 14th and December 20th is our last two meetings we had. And I did receive some corrections from trustee Stetser. I think you were your reading. Apparently, my eyes were closed, as I said.
It's okay, you've got a lot, lot to handle right now. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December 14th.
I, I'm sorry, I have one addition on, on, on the 14th. And that's under, it's under the project plan for treasure training. Can you note, this is asked for at every meeting, can, can you note that I asked for a more detailed project plan on that training? That's a surprise to nobody.
Any other comments on the minutes, or I'll entertain a motion to approve?
I'll second. Renee, you had already made the motion.
So, so I'll, do I need to correct it? I'll.
With corrections.
Okay, great.
Okay, roll call, trustee Lightkit.
Aye.
Trustee Lamphier.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to approve the December 20th minutes with corrections, whatever corrections you received. Do I have to say that?
I didn't get any on the 20th.
Oh, I thought, okay, I stand corrected. I'll just make a motion to approve the minutes of December 20th.
Okay, we have a motion, but Justin has a question, yes?
Yeah, I just, I was looking at the packet. I guess, Dorothy, you mentioned those came in today. I see December 21st.
Yeah, it's December 20th. It's December 20th. That's my fault. Sorry, it was the Tuesday.
Okay.
Yep.
I find it now in the, in the packet. Thank you, appreciate it.
Yep, it's a half page.
You're right, on page 20.
Okay, was there a second for those?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Lamphier.
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All righty. Okay, first item up, it is a special permit application for 18 South Main Street and salon.
And let me, let me find Ms. Whelan, then let her speak. Ms. Whelan, if you're here, if you can raise your hand. There she is. Okay, she'll be coming into screen in a minute. And you're able to speak now.
Hi, how are you guys?
Hi, welcome. How are you doing?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Very well. Happy new year.
Happy new year. Happy new year, everyone.
So what's going on here?
Um, so I own Blowout Studio, which is 20 South Main Street, and I wanted to expand when that space became available next door to it and do a full-service salon, which kind of plays off of my salon now, which just specializes in styling. So I wanted to be able to have my staff have somewhere to grow to and just expand the business altogether in the village. I've had the one business now for almost five years on that corner, so really enjoying being there and just wanting to kind of expand our services and the business.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah.
And you've been very successful. Am I to understand you recently had a baby?
I did, about five weeks ago.
Oh, my goodness, congratulations.
Nice, congratulations. Thank you, yeah, my first little girl.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
You're probably not getting too much sleep, though, between this and a new business.
Uh, no, not much. Yeah, two businesses and a newborn, so it's exciting over here.
Ah, that's great.
Thank you.
Okay, Steve, did you have anything to add regarding this application before we bring this back?
Um, no, I, there's nothing really to add. I mean, she's already done. I will say I have to apologize to the board because I, I actually authorized a permit for some work to be done in this and not thinking about the whole need for a special permit for the salon. This was caught afterwards, but they've done a wonderful job. It's, it's a nice shop and it will complement the one next door very much.
Okay. All right.
Lily's got her hand.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Thank you. My question is a practical one, and that is, they were two separate businesses. Are they still two separate? Or did you go, at one time, many years ago, it was all one, and did you go through the wall or is it connected inside or are they being operated as two separate businesses?
They're being operated as two separate businesses, so you didn't take the wall down.
Okay.
Yes. But a lot of our current clients were interested in us having that service, so I wanted to have a whole different separate business to, that complemented but provided services that my existing clientele were looking for.
Okay, I see. So in looking at our criteria for a special use permit, have you been, have you had that in your possession and you are aware of the criteria that we use to make decisions regarding special use permits?
Not, um, in regards to, remind me again?
Well, it's just a list of criteria that the board reviews when, when we're looking at requests for special use permit, and I was wondering if, if the building inspector had gone over those with you at all? Okay. Have you talked about trash removal with your, with your landlord and is that all set?
Yep, that's all set. It's been there for all the businesses in the building. It's, we have trash behind in the back as well as parking.
Okay, you don't have dumpsters there, as I recall. You have totes, is that right?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Ms. Whelan? Yes, Justin?
Actually, just administrative for the, the building inspector, the signature on the application from the applicant, were you able to obtain that?
Yes, yes, I have. I actually have the copy right in front of me with her signature on it.
Great, same application she signed?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I, I will make the motion.
Oh, it's for a public hearing, doesn't it?
Yeah, doesn't it have to go to a public hearing?
Well, it's a setup for, you're right, a motion to go to a public hearing, and then what's the date? Yep.
Right, so I would like to make.
Hang on, excuse me, one second. I believe Dorothy's hand is up. I apologize, Lily.
Okay.
No problem. I just want to address to the board real quick, the date for the public hearing would either be February 8th or 10th, depending on the board's discussion on the board meeting's schedule, so just if we can kind of leave that leeway, whichever one it's going to be for that first February meeting, maybe put it in that motion like that, just so we don't get locked into a date we don't intend. Either way.
And, yeah.
First meeting in February.
Yeah, that's right, and, yeah, we have a whole other discussion about the referendum as well, so.
So we're allowed to give two alternate dates when we set a hearing?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't give a date. I would just say the first meeting of February.
Okay.
First scheduled meeting of the village board in February.
Okay.
Okay, Lily, you're.
I will therefore make a motion that the, we set a public hearing for a special use permit for 18 South Main Street at the first meeting of the trustees in the month of February 2022.
Seconded.
Okay.
Okay, roll call vote, trustee Lamphier.
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Lightkit.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Well, great, well, thank you.
Jessica, just so you know, and forgive me if you already know this, we would love to do it sooner than that. It's the law. We can't change that. That's the soonest we can possibly do it. We want to do everything we can to help you and your business, but that's the, that's the way it works and.
Okay.
So.
I understand.
I'm not going to apologize for it. I just want to sort of acknowledge that that's the way it works.
All right, yep, not a problem. Okay.
Great, thanks, Jessica. Take care.
Good luck to you.
You too. Thanks, guys.
All right. Okay, next up, setting of a public hearing for adding the exemption for volunteer firefighters and ambulance members. That would be the tax exemption. Did you, that's in your packet here.
Yes.
Yes, and we're, we're setting the date for that as well.
Yeah, we are.
That's the action item.
Yeah, just to give a little bit of background, the fire department reached out to me, they, the, to look at giving a 10% tax exemption to emergency volunteers, you know, whether the fire department for the ambulance who live in our community. They have also made the same request of the town, and it's also, I believe that the county is doing something as well. And I think it's a way, one, to acknowledge their service, but also to help with recruiting additional people, that there's a little bit of a tax break, so. I think it's a great idea, and the research that was done, I think it affects right now seven, seven families or seven households that are right now in our village. So that's a little bit of the background on it. So if we can have a motion to go to public, set up the date for a public hearing.
So moved.
And will that also be the first February?
First meeting in February, yes.
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, roll call, trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Lamphier.
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Boy, it's going to be exciting, first meeting in February with all these public hearings. Next up, setting our public hearing on overriding the tax cap, which is, I guess, you know, has been done consistently by this board at the recommendation, actually, of NICOM. Is there a motion?
To remind me again, we've got to set this ahead of the budget because the, they don't coincide, and so whether we end up raising the taxes or not, it's just a good idea to have this in place, right?
You said it.
There you go.
You got it, yes. It has to be done before you pass your budget. That's the key thing with this, so it has to be in place.
Yeah.
So moved.
Okay, so moved. Is there?
Lamphier, second.
Okay.
Okay, trustee Lightkit.
Aye.
Trustee Lamphier.
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, we have a trifecta on public hearings.
Yep.
Is Jeff here at this point? He's going to be.
I do not see him at this time.
Okay.
You should be chiming in and.
Any minute.
Any second.
Well, why don't we just even set up, you know, just the background for this proposed law on the stretch energy code? We have the, whoops, I passed it here. And Steve, you may want to weigh in on this, the stretch energy code, and just maybe give a little bit of the background of it. What?
Just so you know, we can't open that public hearing until 7:15, just because I had to advertise it both ways, because we didn't know if we were going to be remote.
Oh.
Okay, I apologize. I just realized that.
Thank you then for that, okay.
No, so we can discuss ahead of time. We just can't open the public hearing until then.
Okay, I'm wondering if we should just move on then to the crossing guard agreement?
Sure.
You know, kind of just at least keep, keep the others moving, and Steve, if you can just stay put with that for a minute.
No, I can finish my soup then.
Please finish your soup. That would be good. Okay, so if we can scroll down, we have the crossing guard agreement. Whoops, I'm not quite there. This is an intermunicipal agreement with the town to provide a crossing guard right at the end of Sutherland and Monroe Avenue. We have students from Sutherland that are crossing Monroe Avenue. As we know, it's busy and it's not necessarily safe. And this is a program that was initiated by Jen Canning. Thank you, Jen. And also Renee has done some nice work on this as well. Thank you, Renee. Renee, you may want to add to this a little bit?
I cannot take the credit. I just supported Jen and the PTSA as they tried to come up with a solution. As you mentioned, right now with the, the bus driver shortage, a lot of the, particularly the urban suburban kids, our, our students are now all coming to Sutherland instead of getting picked up at Cockins and at. instead of getting picked up at Cockins and at, at Mendon High School. And so we have a, a large group of kids who are crossing that every, every day. And it's a dodgy intersection for, even in the best of circumstances. And at that time of day, it's, it's terrible. So they have a cycle of, right now, volunteers who are staffing that as crossing guards until February 18th. So Dorothea, I, can I put the link to that, just in case anyone listening can fill in? Because I know there still are some spots available. And if anyone from the public would like to volunteer for that, I'll put it in the Q and A or the chat, whichever one you prefer, and then you can share it.
And then we can also post that too, so as a follow up. But that's a nice idea to put it in the chat.
Yep, I would put it in the chat and direct it to everyone.
Yeah, that, that's, that's great. And if, if you've read through it, we are going to just split the cost with the town. It's a $5,500 cost on our part and also on theirs. But the town really is going to do a little bit more of the heavy lifting. They're going to be actually doing the recruiting, training, oversight, and the implementation. So really what we're, our, our role is just to participate in, in this and, you know, to split the costs. And I think it's a good idea. It's in the interest of public safety, obviously, with these kids crossing a main artery. Are there any other thoughts or comments on this? No?
We are going to continue, Mayor Plummer, to highlight with DOT how bad this intersection is. I mean, we, we have tried, it's still not getting much of an upgrade in this latest restriping plan. There's not a lot of room there for them to do, do a lot. But we, we still aren't, we still aren't where we should be with trying to make that a little safer.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thanks, thanks for sharing that. And I wouldn't mind even seeing it also implement, implemented at the other end of Sutherland and Jefferson. That's, even though there's a light there, it's not always safe. So, yes, Justin, did you have your hand up?
Uh, yeah, just related to what trustee?
They're, they're actually aware of the program. It's crossing a road that they're responsible for. But we are more than happy to reinforce that with them at every opportunity when we meet with them. So.
Especially since the cost of a crossing guard there, if there were actually some other measures put there, like it can pay for itself. And yes, we're going to continue to underscore with them. This just adds more to our cash of, of things to bring to them.
Yeah, it really reinforces and underscores, you know, the safety issue, certainly. Okay, I would entertain a motion. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Dorothea, your hand's up, yes.
Yes, we have a public comment.
Okay.
Will the school district be participating in the cost? This is coming from Peggy Caraveros.
I am, let's see, I don't know that the school district does mention that way. I, I don't have that answer. I know what our cost is. I mean, we agreed with the town, you know, that we would work jointly. I know right now that, and Renee, maybe you can add to this, that the, the PTSA has really been helping to get, you know, the, get the volunteer pool up and running.
Yes, they're doing this volunteer solution for, to get through until an actual crossing guard can be hired. But if I, if, if I'm correct, I think the town covers the cost of the other crossing guards that are at Jeff Road and in front of Cockins and, and other locations. So I don't know if the school district shares part of that cost. Would be a question for Supervisor Smith.
And I, I think also, the school district, you know, the, the town's providing the training, but I also think the school district participates in that as well. Yeah, that would be for, for the supervisor. Any other comments, Dorothea?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the contract as presented.
I'll second.
Tied.
All right, Justin got it.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Okay, trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkin?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Lanfair, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Oops, sorry, before we move on in the chat, if anyone's listening and wants to volunteer, there are 30-minute slots each afternoon to be a volunteer crossing guard until a full-time crossing guard can be put in place or a permanent crossing, crossing guard. And if you look in the chat, there's a sign up genius link there, and you can choose which, which day you'd like to, to do.
Um, Mayor Plummer, before you move on, there was a question related to the, the public hearing for the fire department, through the volunteers from the ambulance and them. The question comes from Peggy Caraveros. She wanted to know, will this include firemen who are paid in our two districts?
I'm, I don't understand the question. This is.
I guess if it's a paid fireman working in one district and then works in both, like I guess volunteers in Pittsburgh, but works for the city. I'm going that is where she was leaning for.
It's, it's the people who live here and work here.
But serve as a fireperson in any district?
No, this was, that was not my understanding. I'd have to look at the contract, I, I didn't understand.
Jeff has his hand raised.
Yeah, Jeff, can you speak to that, please? I didn't understand it that way.
I don't know if I can speak to that question specifically, but this is designed for people who reside in our village who fit the criteria of volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. So they have in our, in our jurisdiction to get a tax break from us.
Okay. It sounds like they have to be a volunteer, not paid, correct?
It's particular to X exemption, that's correct.
In this one.
Okay. All right, hopefully that answered.
And the households that were identified in our village, the seven households, were all volunteers who are residents and serve our Pittsburgh Fire District.
Okay.
I would want to perhaps make it whether they're volunteers or employees. Either way, make it avail, the exemption available to them. This doesn't please Jeff.
Uh, yeah, Jeff?
Not that it displeases me. This was authorized by the legislature for the, and it's, that's the extent of what we can offer.
Okay.
There may be another way to offer additional exemption without looking into it further. You know, it's not, certainly not blessed by the Department of Taxation and Finance.
Well, if there's a way to do it, I'd like to think about that or at least discuss it.
Yeah, and I think that Jared Lusk also helped us in, working on this. And he, they did some math, and it impacts every household, I think, in the village by maybe 56 cents. You know, it's, it's a, it's minor, but it's an important, I think, thing to do.
And actually, Jared would be the right guy for us to contact about the employment issue.
Yeah.
Ways versus volunteers.
Yeah, we can follow up with Jared. Yeah. And, and they will also be available, I believe, at the public hearing in February, you know, to answer any additional questions as well. That was based on my conversation today. Let's see, is it?
Yep, we got five minutes.
We have five minutes?
Oh, three minutes.
Three minutes.
I lost three, I lost two minutes there.
Okay. Um, let's see.
I was going to say, I think you can explain the intention of it and still get.
Yeah. Okay, so why don't we, yeah, maybe we can bring Steve back just to talk a little bit about the stretch energy code and the fact that we have passed a resolution that we are a climate smart community. And so this is part of what, you know, it's an sustain, sustainability effort on our part to adopt this. Steve would like to add to that, if you can?
Yeah, it, it, it is one of the, the point value items for becoming a climate smart community. On what it is, it, it creates a little more stringent energy and envelope requirements for any new construction or any additions on a home. It just, it, it's about making things a little more sustainable and a little more energy efficient.
Okay. Well, that took a minute.
I really thought you guys had a lot more to say.
I mean, there's, there isn't a lot more to it. I mean, it just, it just basically, i- it's some of the inflation values step up 10% in order to make houses a little more efficient. And, and it goes towards a goal they have of trying to make everything self-sustaining within the next 15 years.
Mm-hmm. And so you, I remember you, you tossed, cited an example of like, you know, traditionally code has a certain R value, for example, for insulation that would be required. And this is, as an example, would have a greater R value for new construction.
Yep, windows, same thing. Everything has heightened the requirements for energy efficiency. Even the requirements for your furnaces or any, any kind of home heating system. It changes the requirement for that, for having makeup air or a, what they call an EV to do heat recovery and preheat the air into your home.
Okay, and so this, this particular code, as I understand it, is being adopted across the state by municipalities that have resolved to become climate smart communities. This is part essentially of everybody moving forward.
Yes, there, there are many, many communities throughout the states that have done this last year prior to this, and, and have received some pretty substantial grant money based on their, their efforts to become climate smart communities.
Okay, so this would give us quote points, then going towards what would be grants. And my understanding is the grants that we receive are, we don't have to, you know, be reimbursed.
No, they're not, they're non-matching grants. And then it could allow us, like, like you're, we're looking at maybe doing a geothermal or some sort of new heating system in the, this would, this would help. And then that would put us on another level.
Right, okay.
It, it's kind of like, we could start climbing a ladder by doing some of the things first, which allow us to climb higher on the ladder for the grant monies that are available. And, and there's, I, I mean, there's a lot of money sitting on the table right now that people aren't utilizing.
Okay, so this, this essentially gets us to another level. Okay, that's good to know, thank you. Okay, well, I think we.
Good job.
We hit the mark. Thanks, Steve, appreciate that. Okay. We all have the law before us. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second, Lanfair?
Okay, roll call.
Okay, trustee Lanfair?
Lanfair, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkin?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Are there any comments from the public this evening? If so, please state your name and address or write in or give it a minute here.
So far, I don't have anything in my email, and I don't have anything in Q and A. And I don't think anyone has raised their hand.
Okay. Steve?
Just, so the, so the public or anybody on does know, this won't affect existing properties or existing homes or residents within the village. It will not cost you any more money or, or any more requirements other than you currently have. It's based on new construction or any, you know, any.
Upgrades.
additions, upgrades.
Thank you, that's, that is helpful. Okay.
And we're still quiet.
All right. Well, it's a good thing that this, this particular.
We got 21 attendees, just so the board knows. And so far, everybody's happy, no, or not happy or just happy.
Okay.
No hands, no comments.
Okay, is there a motion then to close the public hearing and bring it back to the board?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
She got it.
Sorry, Dan.
I'm not sure she did.
Wordy words, I got you on number of words.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Lanfair, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkin?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, is there any further discussion from the board or any questions? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to pass the proposed law and adopt the stretch energy code. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed stretch energy code.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lightkin?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Lanfair, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Low for sustainability, thank you. All right, next up, we'll go to the deep, item number five, DPW safety and security. Okay. And let me just, this. Yeah, we, you know, and this is probably, you know, tied in, I think, with item number six as well as part of, you know, an entire discussion. But we did want to bring this back to the board because there, there have been concerns, ongoing concerns actually, regarding security around the DPW facility and safety. Because especially with the Erie Preserve, Nature Preserve going in on the town side and that being activated and people walking up through the Arboretum. It has been discussed in, in previous meetings with this board about the DPW wanting to make sure that the, there was enough security measures put in place that would support public safety because they are working with large vehicles and heavy equipment throughout the day. So just wanted to bring this back to the board. And I know people want to weigh in. I believe, Zach, you, you may want to speak to some of the efforts that have been made. I know you want to follow up also on the discussions from the previous meetings as well.
I'm not sure how to kick this one off, but it seems that these questions keep coming back to us. When the Arboretum was first put in place, there was, you know, the town's art system, their child system was starting to bring more and more people through here. We didn't, there wasn't a clear plan in the first place. So now we're reacting to all these people that are coming through our DPW in, in trying to, to make the area safer. There's been an increase in the number of pedestrians that come through here, loose dogs, kids on bikes. And a lot of the times, they come from out of nowhere. So, you know, we're just trying to, again, to react to this and create a safer environment for everyone.
Zach, I want to say, I don't know if we have the ability to put some of the pictures up. I know that you and the crew were sort of taking a look at other DPW facilities within the county and what, how they were secured.
Yeah, I believe 12 other facilities were visited, and every one of those facilities were all fenced in indeed. We are the only one that I, I am aware of that is open to the public to be able to come in and mosey around and walk through here. And, you know, the equipment that sits outside is all subject to, you know, whatever happens after hours, which we can't always keep track of. We're just wide open and accessible.
And so, you know, part of, part of this is that, and we had brought this to the board, actually, several months ago. And we have a budget cycle coming up. So we will be looking to seek some funding to secure a fenced-off area for storage. Uh, for storage of equipment and, and other things, so. Okay, we have some of the pictures here of some of these facilities. Um, these are throughout Monroe County, and I believe. We are the only uh, D P W facility that does not have the secured fencing. Yeah, I don't know if you, is there a way to enlarge some of these, Dorothea, so the public can see some of the fenced. Facilities, and a lot of them have, you know, maybe. You know, single entries, you know, I, entry and exits, that type of thing. And uh, you know, key cards, things like that. Is there a way to enlarge any of these?
I am. Are they not showing?
No, I'm not seeing them. I'm just seeing you clicking on them.
Hold on.
Share the whole screen, not just an application.
Oh, what was it? Oh, share the whole screen. Okay.
I thought it was. Hold on.
And the other thing also that was discussed at the meeting, and Zach is following up on it, maybe you can speak with that about. The signage. So you can see this is a secured facility. Wow, they have wire too.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, now it's enlarged. Thank you.
That's the town of Pittsburgh Highway Department. Um, they have an electric fence there to shut it down um, after hours. Um, and you have to put in a, a code to be able to access it from um, the, uh, from the roadside. Um. So they're secure, and they've got a very large uh, facility.
See if I can. Yeah.
Is that showing?
Yeah, no, that's enlarged. That was good. Thank you. And also.
Clearly, we should um, in, you know, get more serious about our security around our D P W, and we'll, we'll run through that process during the budgeting. Phase, right?
Yeah, I, I think.
We need to decide on today.
I think what needs to happen is we have to sit down and come up with a clear plan of what we're going to do with the D P W facility and um. How to create a trail system through the woods that is safe um, for everybody.
Okay, why don't we make this part of the safety team discussion? It's very clearly related.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, that actually is um, on the agenda for the safety team. You know, we, we, um, safety committee. Um, we unfortunately had to cancel the last meeting because so many people were out with COVID, so we're in the process of rescheduling that. Um, you also have in your packet the um, report. That the um, safety specialist for our insurance company provided. She is the safety specialist. Uh, for the northeast region of um, our insurance company, and she had. Made some recommendations as well. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Justin, was your hand up?
Uh, yeah, just, I, I have uh, several questions about um, this, this arrangement. I, I guess that I was going into this meeting, um, hoping to. Uh, come to some kind of terms about the uh, the trail that's been closed, which is. Uh, in my understanding, essentially the, the primary entrance and the most commonly used entrance to the village Arboretum. Uh, that's been dedicated as parkland. Uh, I was very disappointed to see that it was closed. Um, there, I've been asking many questions about this. I still don't really have basic answers uh, to questions, including. Uh, who authorized it to be closed and who ordered it to be closed. Um, so I do have many questions there. Uh, I guess I'm, I'm further disappointed that. Uh, the, the, the primary focus, the discussion so far has been, um, you know, what other measures can we uh, put in place? Uh, you know, this is a, a very prime piece of real estate. Uh, certainly, there has to be an eye towards security. Um, but this is also on the canal uh, in the L W R P, in the open space district. Um, and uh, so I, I guess uh, it seems to be going in a slightly different direction than I was hoping. Um. The, uh, I, I guess a, a quick question, though, about the safety committee. Um, is that, have those uh, committee meetings been publicly noticed, and are those meetings subject to open meetings law? If they're going to be influencing the policies of this board?
They, they are not publicly noticed. They do not require to be publicly noticed, since there is not three board members from the village on the committee. So it's staff with village employees, I think the mayor and trustee Keating.
I also, also take umbrage with the phrase have influence over this board. There's. It's just not a part of it.
Yeah, I, I apologize then if that was, uh, I, I didn't mean for it to be taken in that light. I guess my understanding of, of uh, open meetings law is that it's uh, not a quorum of this board, but that we formed a, a separate committee. And so whenever a, a quorum of that committee is together, uh, then they would be subject to open meetings law.
There, there is, there are not three members of any board on this committee, Justin, and the committee is an internal committee that will be making recommendations, and they, that will be brought back to this board in a public manner, so I think. Um, appreciate your question, but I think. It's, uh, there's a little bit of a misdirection there. I also would like to speak to um, what you keep referring to as a trail somehow that has been closed off. Um, and I, I think there may be some of our uh, crew members here this evening from the D P W who may wish to speak to that. Um, that has been an access road for decades. There has been a gate there since nineteen sixty, according to our research. That has always been able to be chained and locked. It was an access road for the D P W to go in and store things or get gravel, or as people know who've walked through there. There is a carved out part of a hill for sand that was used uh, for various projects throughout the village. So um, I know, you, you know, it's trying to be, you're trying to frame this as though somehow a trail has been. Closed off. This is really about a security issue for D P W, having people coming. You know, through the facility and through the property. From that road through the Arboretum, where they may be backing out a truck and potentially hitting somebody or someone's dog or someone on a bike. There are a number of other ways to access the Arboretum. Uh, you can access through the town and walk the beautiful trail. You can access through the Auburn Trailhead and take the fork. You can also uh, take the trail head that is off a village lane. Which, by the way, is a private road and posted as such for D P W, but there is a trail head there for people to access, so. The idea that um, somehow a trail has been closed off to. Limit somehow access to the Arboretum, I think, is uh, misrepresenting what is really exclusively a public safety issue. Um, I would like to call on any of the other members of the uh, our D P W, because I know that they have some thoughts on this, and if they. Um, would like to speak or have their hands up just to weigh in, or if Zach has some other thoughts on that as well.
I do have someone. Ready to speak if the board's ready.
I am. Someone wishes to speak, yeah?
Okay, hold on.
Board.
Jason, you're able to speak?
Work it out.
There you are.
Hear you.
Okay, good. As long as you can't see me, no. You still got me?
We have you. Go ahead.
You see your names.
So uh, thank you for, uh, everybody on both sides of this for raising concerns and questions. I think that's. Uh, an important part of any discussion is just having that communication to be able to kind of answer each other's questions. Um. So obviously, I'm boots on the ground, uh, and I, I think that our voice isn't necessarily always heard. Um, a lot of times, it just kind of goes. To just what certain people are feeling, but um, I've worked here for a little over a year now, um, and seen some great progress in the last few months, just uh. To be able to be involved with. Um, our concerns and what we feel are issues that we experience as, as D P W employees uh, out and about. Um, as, as somebody had mentioned, the uh, beautiful trail that the town owns behind the Arboretum has certainly increased the traffic just in this last. Uh, few months, uh, even into the fall. It was a beautiful spot to go through. And so for us, obviously, fall is one of our busiest times of year. Um, we do all sorts of brush collection, leaf collection. Uh, we're patching up little pro, you know, projects, bringing in stone or aggregates to, you know, store in the yard for other projects, so. Our, our shop is a very busy place, uh, you know, Monday through Friday. Um, obviously, as an on-call basis in the weekend, it's a little bit different. It's not as frequently fly. Um, but our back area, obviously, I, I call it the yard. Um, there's all sorts of things stored back there, um, between stone, scrap metal, um, debris, um, you know, sweeper piles that have been sucked up, which, you know, that contains glass from accidents. Um, all sorts of things, and you know, I've come in before and seen people back there. You know, we've had tires dumped. We've had, you know, people dropping off furniture. Uh, and just, you know, treating it like a dump. Um, and it's concerning when we come in and out of there with the equipment, and there's just. People cutting through next to our dumpsters or next to our car or next to the building, uh, backing out of our building because our vehicles are all pulled in. So we back out of our building right at that wide entrance to where, you know, that canal path is, and there's people that. They just pay no mind whether they have headphones on or they're on their phones. Um, you know, I've often said hi to people, and I get no response. I'm one of the most friendly people you're going to find out there. And it's not because they don't want to say hi, it's because they're not paying attention. Um, and I make it a point to try to get their attention. And I've even told people. Please, uh, you know, just pay mind to us being around here, especially in the back area. So the, the gate that's closed, um. I guess is being deemed considered a trail, and, and really, it's, it's a small section of area that is an access point to. What I believe is the Arboretum. Um, I really, if, if I'm what, hiking a trail, I'm going to want to use that trail that that's further down by our green barn. Um. But again, I'll, I'll, I'll get away from all of that that's here nor there. My biggest concern is I don't want to be responsible for an accident because somebody is cutting through with a bike. Or they're, they're running their child through there in one of those uh, you know, strollers, the running strollers, or chasing after their dog. We had a dog loose not long ago. That ran up into the woods and somebody just darted right out in front of the tool cat, and it was just, I understand the urgency to ca, capture a dog. God, I've owned multiple dogs, man, alike. But these are the things that happen, and it's a more frequent occurrence now, and even just the last few months. Um, I think that discussion, questions and answers can definitely solve some of these problems. I think a designated area so that we know where to expect people to be. Um, i- increase those chances of we know where they're going to be, kind of like a crosswalk would be. You know, we know that people are going to, nine times out of ten, use a crosswalk in four corners versus, you know, just jaywalking across the street. So, you know, having a designated path, making it known to the public. Um. Obviously, communicating that to the public is huge, uh, and I think that we're trending in the right direction with that, too. I think even just the other day. Uh, Dorothea had posted on our, our Facebook that, and, and the website that, uh, you know, we had a water main break, and I would love to see more of that, like any. You know, the traffic like today this morning was a four-way flash for about an hour or two. Um, you know, things like that, just getting. Notified, so people are aware of what's going on. Um. But again, I. Fully about safety. Uh, we've had some bad things happen. Um, and I'm, I'm also a volunteer firefighter, so I've seen it all, and I've done it for. In, in excess of fifteen years, and there's a lot of things out there that you would never think would happen, uh, and they do, and it's the moment when you say. It's never going to happen. It's not an issue. You just have to pay attention. That's exactly when it happens. So I know we're not going fast back there. But it only takes five miles an hour with a very large unforgiving vehicle to do a lot of damage, so. Um, that's just my two cents with that. I hope you appreciate some of my. Comments and concerns, um, and I hope that we can resolve this in, in a civil manner. So that's, that's all I have.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Jason, while we have you, is there anything else we can do for you?
Am I still alive?
Yep, you're still alive.
Uh, not at this point, no. I just kind of wanted the guys to hear what I had to say and, and uh, share my concerns.
Yeah, well, the door's open, and let us know if you have others.
Will do. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Were there any other comments or hands up, Dorothea?
Yes, we do have a, a Q and A question. It's Peggy Care Baris. She says, several questions regarding safety management specialist. Record. Did the board have input to the safety management consultant October twenty fifth site visit? Did safety. Committee walk the site with the specialist? Why didn't safety management consultant recommend fencing around the D P W as in many other municipalities? I believe she did recommend that we have additional fencing and additional signage. Uh, the village employees were there. Some of them were there for the walk-through. I was there with the mayor. Um. And Zach was there as well.
The report is in the.
It's in the packet.
In the packet, yeah, and it's also in the packet in the previous meeting that I think was uh, earlier this fall. Yes, Zach.
I was just going to say that uh, it clearly stays in, uh, she recommended fencing and barriers uh, at that trail. Um. The access. So that's even coming from. From our insurance company that's recommending that.
Yeah. And she's a safety specialist. This is, you know, her, her bailiwick. Yes, Justin.
Yeah, I've, I've asked this, uh, this question a couple of times and haven't really gotten an answer. I, I tried to put all the, um, I, I thank Dorothea for putting the records of all my emails in the, uh, the packet for this meeting. One question that I was really looking to, um, to figure out is the, uh, some of the context of these uh, safety recommendations from the insurance company. Um, I know that the insurance company was first brought on site because there was a, a claim. There's an issue related to an equipment malfunction. Um, and then they issued a report related to unauthorized pedestrian traffic. Um, and the notion of unauthorized pedestrian traffic was uh, interesting to me to, to understand this, because. Um, we have a shared parcel between the D P W and the uh, the dedicated parkland, so. I, I wasn't quite understanding, you know, what, what constitutes something that's unauthorized versus authorized. Um, and so I wanted to know, you know, how do we go from the insurance company investigating a uh, equipment malfunction issue to investigating. Um, unauthorized pedestrian traffic? Was this a required part of the report, or was this something that we specifically requested?
Oh, yes, Zach.
Selective was brought in for this purpose. Um. New York State Insurance Fund was brought in for the uh, purpose of assessing our equipment and our D P W facility in terms of safety uh, due to the equipment malfunction. So two different insurance companies, two different processes. And two different reasons why they're here.
So, and, and this is a pretty, yes, Dorothea, I see you wanted.
Yeah, I want to chime in there as well, and as our D P W staff is on. Board, if they want to chime in as well. The D P W did approach me and the mayor over concerns about several near misses with hitting pedestrians walking through the D P W area. To the point that, you know, the pedestrians. You know, felt that they were in the right and that the D P W shark shouldn't be there. It is the D P W facility. You know, as Jason indicated, one hit of a dump truck is not going to be a good thing, so we asked them. What measure, additional measure should we take with the public accessing that property? You know, where they shouldn't be, and that's where they made those additional recommendations. We went to them and asked them to look at this.
And this is pretty common practice, um, and I think, you know, anything to do where we um, can, you know, review what is, what we can improve and what needs to be taken in terms of safety measures. I would think that we all would be supportive of that, um, in the interest of keeping the public safe and also our D P W crew. Yes, Justin.
So, uh, and, and pardon my, my ignorance on this. I, I don't have a lot of familiarity with the insurance coverage that we carry there, but. Um, is selective, the, the firm that issued this, they are our insurance carrier if a pedestrian were to be struck, or, or are they a separate consulting firm? Okay.
No, they are our insurance carrier. They're the people we should contact.
So I, I guess. So we reached out to them because of staff concerns about this issue, um, and I, I fully agree that, you know, we, we should be uh, very concerned. We have to address pedestrian safety issues. Um, and we have to make sure that our, our workers feel like they're working in a safe environment. Um, I guess it just seems a little bit. Uh, i- it's interesting to me that. Instead of, you know, bringing that concern back to this board to say, you know, what, uh, do we, do we engage a consulting firm to create a new site plans that we can balance uh, pedestrian safety concerns with. Um, you know, recreational use of the adjacent property, um, or do we, uh, you know, go to somebody like OSHA? Um, who investigates this? I guess my concern is that, um, and, and this is an overall concern with how we approach issues of risk. Um, is it a common practice for us to go to our insurance carrier first? Um, or is, uh, is there a different approach that we could follow where, um, you know, the insurance carrier is really there to, um, to cover us? Um, you know, when there is a risk that we're unable to fully mitigate. Um, I just wonder if we're able to, you know, we're, we're looking at this from, uh, we're looking, we're talking about this right now, because. Uh, a risk was identified. We talked to the insurance company, and then we had a, a trail that was commonly used by pedestrians, whether or not it, it should have been a separate issue, but. It was closed by a gate that had been in place uh, for different issues before, um, you know, to limit vehicular traffic and that kind of thing. Um, there's a pile of mulch added across this trail, a row of hay bales and uh, posted and pedestrian redirection signs of both sides.
May I interrupt you for a second and ask you, um, do you, do you feel that there's no other way to access the Arboretum?
There are certainly.
There's no other way to do this, that somehow by, by creating the safety measure.
Actually.
Or the pop, excuse me, let me finish. Right, creating the safety measure. Um. For the D P W. for the DPW and the public that somehow this has so profoundly and greatly restricted access to the public space. I'd like to hear an answer to that question.
Well, actually, I was asking a different question just
I'm asking a different question, too, and I'd like to hear an answer because I think there's somehow a rabbit hole here. This is this is not about an arboretum. This is about an access road that people use and you keep calling it a trail. It is a former access road that is now, part of it is on public land. And people keep cutting through and you're hearing from DPW staff and crew that are worried that they're gonna hit somebody. I don't see what the issue is here. I think this is pretty straightforward. The insurance company, it's not like they're a homeowner's insurance company. This is a professional agency that ensures many municipalities. This person who did the inspection was a safety specialist in this field. This isn't, you know, somebody trying to get you to buy life insurance. This is what municipalities do. There's nothing untoward about this. This is definitely appropriate. And I would hope that I would get the support from the rest of the board. Yes, Zach.
I just want to add that there never was a site plan to begin with. This is just a whole bunch of reactive measures taken for, you know, safety reasons because of a trail system that's been added on, that's not our property. Opening our property up to more people being able to access it, which that didn't have a site plan either. We really need to revisit this as a whole and create a site.
Yeah, and I think I think, you know, what should really come out of this is that we would have the entire parcel properly surveyed. And, you know, reviewed in terms of what is necessary for the DPW and how is that defined? And also the 10 acres set aside. There's, I don't even think, Jeff, are you aware of any particular map that was part of a resolution showing exactly where the 10 acres are? For Steve? Anybody?
I'm unaware of any map.
Okay, thank you. Steve, no? Yes?
Lily, Lily had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lily. I didn't, I apologize. Yep, Lily.
Thank you. Yes, I think in listening to everything that's transpiring, I'm hearing undercurrents of things as well. And I, what I believe is that there is a path forward, excuse the pun, in that there is room here for the safety measures to be put in place for the DPW, understanding we have a very unique situation in that as Jason, Justin has pointed out, it does fall within the LWRP and visually next to the canal, we have all of these extra layers. We can resolve this by having the safety measures put in place that's separate. We can also develop a path for a safety, safer way for through this area for pedestrians. This is all possible. We have the land, it's there, it's just a matter of sitting down. And just as Justin provided for all the trustees in our packets, he demonstrates very well on his map how this can be accomplished. So both these goals can be met. I think that it's unfortunate that I continue to hear references to the fact that there was no site plan when at the time, you know, you're looking at an arboretum, it doesn't require a site plan. I don't want to go back to that argument. I want to move forward in a positive fashion. And we have a park that we would like and the public has demonstrated to us they have a great deal of interest in it and we want to, we want to support that. And so I think there's a very real way to create a sub set path adjacent to the DPW that will not encroach upon their driveway where rightly so, they have valid concerns for public safety. We can do this. It is possible. So I think if we go back to what Justin has provided to us in in the packet, certainly the safety committee or whatever committee you feel is appropriate to review this can can bring it to us and say, here's our plan. We can make this path, we can cut a few branches and allow public through here and then eventually this is where the fence will go for the DPW.
Lily, I think we all want the same things. I don't, I don't see any one thing as being mutually exclusive at all. I think somehow, you know, we are combining actually the two items this evening clearly, and I'm fine with that, and I think it kind of makes sense. But I think we're all on the same page that it is solvable and workable. I do think that public safety is paramount and I start with that. I always start with public safety and I think we all should. Yes, Steve.
All right, a couple of things. I want to, I want to address some comments about the insurance person. As I do, that insurance person would have a responsibility to his company and to his charge. If he saw another safety issue while in conducting an investigation of another item, he has a responsibility to bring that forward. If he saw a safety issue in regards to the facility, he has a responsibility and his duty, as I would during an inspection, if I saw another item that was something that I deemed a safety issue, to bring that to the attention of whoever and bring it forefront and comment on it. All right, so that's one thing. The other thing is this, this gate and the mulch pile blocks off approximately 280 foot of trail. Period. There is an access to the main trail system, which I put in the packet. I took pictures and walked it today. 170 feet from that roadway that goes up, turns to the right, goes down to the Auburn Trail, goes straight up forward. If you look at the three pictures and goes right up to the top of the arboretum, connects to all the main trails. Nobody has lost any access into that area other than that gate and 250 feet of roadway. There's nobody blocked from any access or use of that space.
Okay, thank you. Dorothea, was there another comment? I see your hand up. Yeah.
We do have three comments. First one's Dave Ferris. Reading the letter from our insurance company does not suggest closing the trail. It advises appropriate fencing and signage. There should be a solution. Mr. Pierce's comments, I am in total agreement with Lily's comments. And Dave Ferris said 27 Monroe Avenue. We have their addresses on record. And Art Pierce, again, in brief summary, there is a site plan for both. Is there a site plan for both the boards and the public's review comment? And if not, believe there should be one developed, should be developed.
There is, there is no site plan. And there is, there is no, my understanding based on the feedback from our attorney and our building inspector and code official that there, there has been no mapping actually defining the actual 10 acres. And maybe that's something we need to do. Let's, you know, let's survey the entire parcel and make sure this is where DPW is, this is where the 10 acres are, you know, all of that. Yes, Justin.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to to kind of circle around a couple of issues here. I also think that there is a solution. I think that all of us care deeply about safety and security. Safety and security seem to be a couple of different things. I know that we've had different discussions about both of those. Security of equipment, security of the facilities and safety of pedestrians. And my concern with trying to figure out, you know, what is our process for identifying risk? What is our process for balancing and ensuring that we're meeting safety and security needs? And recognizing the central role of this parcel in an area that highlights recreational opportunities at many different levels and in all of our supporting documents. So I think that there is a way to achieve all this. I, I think that the risk, the other question that I've been asking repeatedly is who made the decision to close the the trail, you know, call it whatever you want to replace a different term for trail, but this area was closed down. I know that the equipment or the hay bales, the mulch or the hay bales were purchased by Zach, but I just, I want to know what decision was was made here so that the process is one that really balances what this community values.
Was your hand up, Dan?
Mine was.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I just wanted to answer Justin's question. Um, yeah, it was my decision to close the gate and put the hay bales.
Tell me, I didn't catch you, I'm sorry.
It was my decision to close the gate and put the hay bales.
Well, that was also came out of a discussion with this board about the immediate safety concerns because someone was almost hit and that was brought back to this board and the board heard that discussion. It's a matter of record. And so the directive or the discussion out of that was that to secure that part of the property and also put up signage so we can direct people to the other trailheads and that's what Zach's working on now with the town. And that's in the minutes, I think, I'm trying to remember when that meeting was. I want to say October.
November.
Could be wrong. Yes.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Zach. It's helpful to know that you made that decision. And I think that we should all take responsibility for ensuring that environments are safe. I think that the deliberative process of this board in in public helps us to achieve our goals, whether they're safety, security or balancing things like recreational needs. And I think that it's important that, you know, we're having these discussions to make sure that all those things are really being met. And so I'm glad that we're talking about this. I guess I do think that a map is necessary, a plan is necessary to make sure that we're meeting those objectives. When the selective report was presented at a previous meeting, there was no map and there was no resolution. I really did not have a good understanding of what was going to be done. So I don't really consider that to be a product of board deliberation or position of the board personally. I think that the, when we're looking at the material, you know, when I look at what's done now, personally, I don't know if that really meets the the safety and the security needs in the best way possible. My proposal in the packet here is to have, you know, the the need that seems to be brought up here, at least the the most short-term immediate need is to ensure that we don't have pedestrian vehicle accidents. And so what I proposed in the packet is to have the pedestrians go along the green strip by the trees to the right of the fence as you're looking up towards the arboretum. I believe that that's a balance of making sure that pedestrians are not in the vehicular path, the paved portion of the road. And there's already a clear path there, you know, just a couple of dead sticks that have to be knocked down and a piece of fence that's already on the ground that can just be pushed aside. I, you know, I would like to propose that as a short-term solution that balances safety with the ability to have continued recreational use, which, you know, I know there's been more people walking in this area. I think that's a, it's a problem and it's also a good problem in some ways because there's more recreational use, which we want to encourage. So I'd like to propose that so that it's not such a dramatic change. We're blocking off this route. While we go back and figure out a better plan, you know, which might involve fencing, might involve different trails. But I think that's a good compromise. I wanted to hear the rest of the board. Thanks and other members of the public and
I have some concerns about that. We have other hands up, so let's let some other people weigh in here. Dan, then Steve.
So Zach.
Has comments.
Zach, I just want to make it clear. From where I sit as a member of the board, you're enabled to make decisions based on people's safety. And you're a professional and if there are decisions that, you know, immediately will improve the safety of your team and of the public, you are enabled to make those and we can talk about them. I just don't, I just don't want your takeaway from this to be I can't make any decision about safety until the board deliberates it. Okay, I just want to make sure that's really clear.
Thanks. Okay, excuse me, and then, and then, thank, thank you. Oh, Dan, were you finished? I'm sorry. You're finished, Dan? Okay, Steve.
I am completely and totally against walking around that gate to go into the same area. The purpose of the gate to close it, because if that gate gets open and the DPW people are in there, those people still have access to the exact same place these workers are concerned about. There is access to the area 170 feet away. You are not preventing recreation use. What you are preventing is the possibility of somebody on that roadway when Zach or any of those people have a piece of equipment back there. If you allow them 15 or 20 feet to the right of that gate to walk by it, what's to prevent them from going straight back over on the road to that mulch pile, climbing around on it? Or having some child climb that mulch pile and fall and we get sued? I am completely against any trail as code officer, fire marshal to this village that would circumvent the gate and allow people in that 250-foot space that is DPW property.
Okay, yeah, I know, Dorothea, there were some comments, but Lily has her hand up as well. Lily, do you want to chime in and then the comments, please?
I would like to please address Steve. It's a point of, I, a point of what? I would respectfully request that the anger be brought down a couple of notches as we're discussing these as as calmly and as rationally as we should as a board and the anger has no place here. And I'm feeling this, I'm feeling a lot of antagonism and a lot of anger. I don't think it's necessary. You have things that you convey to us and I appreciate that, but I also appreciate some, what I feel be a more civil response. Thank you.
I apologize, Lily. It's just, there's been a lot of back and forth in the last few days and a lot of time spent on this that I believe could be better served for the community.
Okay, thanks. Thanks to both of you. I'm gonna go to Dorothea, then Dan, then Justin.
And I'll be quick. Go ahead, Dorothy. You're muted.
Oh, you're muted, Dorothea.
Okay, sorry about that. I have two different comments. Art Pierce, again, what is there to lose by not developing a plan? Dave Ferris, the advice of the insurance advisor, why can't this be done as a result of the visit? Following suggestions were discussed, additional signage, big and bold. This include wording such as private property, authorized vehicles. I'm not going to read all this because it's in the packet. These are the things that was said. Art Pierce, based on all that has been said this evening, that next step is for a motion to be made, a resolution to prevent the development of a plan. No disrespect, Mr. Ferris. Everybody can read this. This is exactly what is in the letter from the insurance person.
So, real quick, my only point is a procedural one. We're at more than a half an hour. We're coming up on 40 minutes on this topic and it is important. We have a long agenda. I'm wondering if this is a candidate for a workshop meeting? Because obviously there's a lot to discuss.
Yeah, I have some thoughts on that, that, but after, after Justin speaks, yes.
Yeah, I agree that there's been a lot of time and effort spent on this. I think that it's maybe a workshop meeting would would be okay to proceed with this, but I think that really this goes back to the deliberative process. You know, if we are changing the the path, we're reconfiguring a path. According to our code, that's something that requires a site plan. And it seems to me like that's what we're doing here. We're saying, you know, why not send people just a little bit farther north?
Where, excuse me, I want to interject. We're on a site plan, there is none, where it shows that that access road is a path. Where was that ever defined as a path?
There are a couple of things here. I think that the fact that this has been used as a path and that it does not seem to have been closed at any recent point in the past. And when I've gone into the arboretum and run into people, they've said, you know, we're used to taking this this path. You know, there is a precedent and there is a formal dedication, I believe, of that land to the public. And I, you know, I know there's some disagreement there. I spent quite a bit of time creating some maps. I think this goes back to, you know, we might not have the best answer here, but I think that the best answer is one that isn't even just the job of this board. It's a job for something like a site plan. So I appreciate what's acted. I don't think that, you know, I don't blame it for taking measures to protect the safety of pedestrians and workers there. But I think that ultimately we want to take, you know, this does have to come back to the board so that we can decide what to do. And I think that something like the site plan process helps us to balance the different factors. I want to go back to my original proposal again and say, you know, now that we've identified the issues, now that we're talking about this pedestrian risk, I would like to do something a little bit less heavy-handed that ensures the safety of pedestrians so that we can come up with a better, longer-term solution following the normal processes for figuring out what is best for this community, which is site plan, which is certificate of appropriateness and all the other things that we normally consider.
We understand that the aspect of cycling is, can you, can you define what would be, quote, a little less heavy-handed than simply closing, understand that there has been a gate or something there since 1960. There has always been a gate with a chain and a lock. And I know people, I've walked, I grew up here, Justin. I've walked through there, too. That doesn't mean that it wasn't an unsafe environment and then I was becoming increasingly more unsafe because there's so much more pedestrian activity. That is the concern. It is not about, you know, we can have other trailheads set up in the arboretum that maybe don't compromise pedestrian safety in this way. We all want to be able to use that land and I agree with what Lily said earlier. This is solvable, but before we sort of get into the whole site plan, I would make a motion that we have this board approve to have a survey done of the parcel. I would make a motion that we have this board approve to have a survey done of the parcel. So we can really say this is where the 10 acres are. This is really where the DPW is and define those boundaries. Because the pictures that were up, that were taken by all the other DPW facilities that were visited by our crew in Monroe County, there was one thing. Every facility was completely fenced in and secured. And ours isn't. And it abuts a lay, a property, a parcel that where people are going in and out. It is unsafe. And so again, I say, I start with the public safety. I think that we should at least keep that fencing up until we survey the land, set it up for a site plan, set it up for a workshop. But at least take care of, of, takes the, keep the measures in place that we've at least put temporarily. The idea that we would open that up just to let people go in and out, when you've heard from our DPW crew and from the superintendent, from the building inspector and code official for the village. I just, I don't feel comfortable opening that up. I really don't. We've, we've heard from professionals and people who work there every single day. So is there, would there be a motion maybe to start to, at least let's start the process. Let's get a survey done. Yes, Jeff?
So I, you know, we talk about a site plan. But this board is going to be the motivating force. Excuse me, for any site plan. And I'm not speaking to emergency measures here in it because I don't have that expertise. But it seems to me the process the board ought to engage in is get a survey so we're know exactly how much property we're talking about there. I've heard it's, I mean, the emails that have been following indicate that it may be at least an acre less than the 12 and a half we thought, the board thought back in July of 2020. So, once you have a survey, you know what you have to deal with. And then you can plan what you want to do with it. You have at least 10 acres that have been, not at least, you have exactly 10 acres that have been allocated to the parkland. That's a done deal until you go to the legislature. The problem is nobody knows where that 10 acres is. There are guesses. There are thoughts. But I think that, once you have it surveyed, then this board has to come up with a recommendation of how that property is going to be divided between parkland and DPW property. And you may even want to consider along with that site plan, a subdivision. So that you actually have the parkland specifically allocated and subdivided out. And you know what you're doing. But I think that all happens, once you know what you're dealing with and you have a plan. That's what a site plan is, is a plan for what's going to happen with that property. And this board has to come up with that plan.
Thank you. Steve, you had your hand up?
I actually was gonna, I'm glad Jeff said exactly what he said because I, I wanted to state the same thing, that you need to do a survey. Need to figure out exactly how much land is there because there's, you know, I've calculated is one thing, Justin has calculated another. The decision to earmark 10 acres was based on a 12 and a half acre assumption. There is not 12 and a half acres there. A, a study has to be done. First off, a survey has to be done, then a study has to be done to decide how much land or, or space does the DPW need to operate safely. From that would be whether you have to go to legislature and maybe change and earmark nine acres for the park and keep two point something for the DPW. But until you do a survey and have an exact amount of land, you cannot forward anything else.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, oh, Dorothea, yes. And then Justin. Okay, sorry, good to see you here.
I have three different things and I didn't want to speak myself. Um, I have Jason requesting speak from the DPW again.
Okay.
Jason, you're free to talk.
Well, good evening again.
Hi, Jason.
Hi, I, I think you guys have really pretty much addressed everything I was going to bring up. I'll touch back to Lily's term path. We'll, we'll call it a path forward here. Obviously, it's a delicate path that we're navigating here. Okay, so I'm done with the jokes, but Justin, I think you, I believe I saw what was maybe your designs for possibly a new path. And that was what Steve was possibly refuting there. I do like the idea of some sort of south entrance, as long as, you know, it's to the side. And there is a buffer between the work zone and the, you know, the trailer, the path. And again, obviously, this looks like it's going to be more of a discussion for later on, so I won't really stay with it too long. But I do like the idea of that. I think that there's a, a way that we can all find some harmony here and make everybody happy. I think you guys are really doing a great job of figuring this out. And it makes me happy to see that the discussions are going in the right direction and the right questions are being asked, not only by the board members, but also by possibly the public here in the chat. So I think that the hay bales in the back or even just prior to those being placed, there were other ones out that sort of motivated people to go in a certain direction, just to kind of steer them to a safer area for us. And it comes down to, for us right now in the short term, if we can get some sort of identification, trail markers, arrows, color coded sign, whatever it takes, just to kind of get people going in the right direction and some sort of public, you know, notice or comment to say, hey, here's what's going on in the short term, you know, here's where you can go. Just so that there is some sort of designation for people. I would feel much happier about that. And I'm sure I speak on behalf of my coworkers that, you know, we really appreciate signage and communication. So having people know where they need to go. And they know that we can be coming and going at any time is very important. And I do understand that it's labeled as a private road at the entrance. But we know that people are going to be there. We expect it. We're on a beautiful piece of property with a park on one side and a canal on the other. I mean, it's expected, we expect it, but things can happen. So as long as there's some communication designation to people, I think that, you know, we can make this harmonious. So that's, that's all I have. I know you, everyone here will come to the right decisions.
Thank you, Jason. And as, as we've mentioned a few times during our conversation, that's what Zach is working on with the town to get the signage. So, yes, Dorothea, you had some other?
Yes, I did. Emily Diaz, she comments, or it's Gabe, I'm sorry. Is the suggestion that I stab, that I can establish a new path by trespassing regularly? That's his comment. The other one is for me and it falls back to the signage. When this was discussed with the board in November, the board had indicated that Zach would be working with the town to get bigger signage, the things the insurance consultant recommended. Really designating that private area to keep people out. There's no reason why we can't put an arrow to the other existing trail entrance, pointing, directing people there in the short term while we resolve that entrance and get this closed off for safety. That would actually resolve the situation right now if people are directed to the proper entrance, which Jason nailed right. As I'm saying, I think that'll help eliminate the concerns. We're not trying to shut it off. We're just trying to shut that portion where they're entering the DPW area. And the bear, the hay bales and all that was recommended by the insurance consultant when we were there. So Zach took her words to heart and put them there. And that's exactly what needed to be done. We don't want people walking into that property. So that's what we did. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much for that, Dorothea. Justin, your hands up, yeah. And then, then we're going to close this out. I mean, I think we've had a lot of good discussion.
I, I think we have as well, and I appreciate everyone's comments. I think that, you know, what, what we're talking about here are different things. We've got a short term. We've got an interim solution to address immediate pedestrian and safety issues. Zach put one in place. I don't blame him at all for doing that. I think that it got the job done. And now it's coming back to the board to make a decision about what the interim solution is and what the long term solution is. My interim solution, which I think is one that Jason was talking about as well, addresses the immediate safety issue. And I think that it does it well enough, you know, by getting people off of that asphalt road. I think that we should watch it closely and take steps based on how we see that working. But I don't see the need to close off a, a route that is established by precedent. So I'm going to go back to the proposal that I made. And I'll make a motion to adopt that proposal of using the, as described in the packet, the trails to the right of the fence and moving hay bales there as a buffer so that we can leave that area open and meet all of our needs in the short term while the longer term plan is, is worked out.
Okay, so there's a, there is a motion made. Is there a second? And then I would like, after whatever the resolution is with this, I have another motion I'd like to make.
I'll second that, so we may discuss. Lanfier?
Any discussion on his motion?
Yeah, I mean, my general feeling is it's premature and we, we need to do it thoughtfully. So.
Yeah, I don't want to do.
I'll be a strong no vote against it.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I'm not comfortable with it. And I appreciate you the fact that that's, you know, you've done the work on this. But I think that what we really have identified is that we need a survey, we need to kind of, you know, let's get our arms around the whole parcel. What, what is the DPW parcel? What is, where are the 10 acres? Let's really make sure we understand our boundaries here before we really move forward with, let's go right to a different trail. Also, I think it's important that, you know, we have the public weigh in. We have other voices, you know, this, this is for everybody. So I'm not confident with that as well. Is there any, are there any other comments? Yes, Renee?
Justin, thank you for your, your work on, on this. I know you were out walking and measuring yesterday and you and I spoke yesterday as well. I want to hear what, what we're hearing from DPW, what we're hearing from, from Steve. And it sounds like there, there might be a workable path if we, you know, where that existing line is along the DPW area, once we can delineate that people don't wander in there. So that DPW can safely operate and pedestrians can also know where to go. So we need new signs, we need a lot of other things. I, I, I'm not confident and I don't, I don't think I'm hearing that, that the DPW team is confident yet in having people use that path. At least until they get some barrier up to delineate where the property ends or where, you know, where that restricted area ends. So I appreciate all the work. I do think that I'm not ready to, to vote yes on saying that until we can get some more temporary barriers and, and signs up so that we can safely get people, people through that, that extra path that you're talking about.
Are there any other comments from the board? Oh, Lily, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, I, I agree with what is being pointed out here and I understand it. I also like to speak to reality and I think Gabe Diaz did touch on that. And that is that people will, even in spite of what we're speaking about this evening, if they've used it in the past, they will continue to use, use the path that they've always gone, which is the DPW driveway. So if we, if we at least demonstrate that there's an alternative right there in front of them, that they just step to one side and they can still use the path that they are used to taking, that until we get a plan in place, that we're being realistic as to how people will actually, what they'll actually do. And so I'd like to accommodate that. I understand that they shouldn't be. I understand.
Lily, do you mean directing them just 100 feet to the, just temporarily?
Just up to the next trailhead?
Is that?
To the, to the, to.
The next one?
To right next to the driveway, where I, what I, what I saw from Justin's packet is that there is a, an opportunity that brings them from Village Lane, which they're coming up, they're already up there, that would allow them to pass through the woods and adjacent to the fence and access where they're going to walk anyway, except to keep them off of the driveway. That is my, that is my, just trying to use common sense and knowing how people react. And I'm just thinking that maybe that would keep them safe until we get a plan in place.
Well, I, you know, I.
Thought that was the dangerous place.
Yeah.
I thought that's where Zach and Jason are saying there's some ambiguity where people use that to, to wander until we can delineate that the restricted area for DPW to safely operate, what I was hearing from Zach and, and Jason. Until we do that, that path that Justin laid out, and it, it wouldn't take much to, to get some barrier there. So this is not like, it doesn't need to be closed forever. But until then, until we can get some delineation there, it sounds like that path isn't maybe the right place to direct people until we can do that.
And I guess I was thinking, and maybe Renee, you touched on a little bit too, is that there would just be a sign directing to the, the next trail and the, the other trail.
For now, until we can get something up. And then this other trail sounds great.
The one along the edge.
But yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay. I, you know, just so, that, that was sort of my, my understanding too. Okay, another last comment from, we have brought this back to the board, there is a motion. And there has been a second, one last comment, if you want, Justin, but I would like to have the vote called. We need to close this out and move on.
A new comment or the same thing again?
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, Dan.
Is it a new comment or the same comment?
Well, I'm, I'm willing to, to give right now. I would like to respond to other people who have suggested the other path. I don't think that the other path is a great option. I think it will reduce the, the usage of that area for recreation. It's kind of over a hill and through a couple of trees and it's hard to find. I think that, you know, what we've heard here is that there's a compromise that can be made. And that area doesn't have to be closed off. So I appreciate your consideration. I guess maybe this one won't, won't advance, but I'd like to see us look for better compromises in the future.
Okay, thanks, thanks for that. I know you may see it as an obstacle. I see it as hiking. We have a second. Let's do a roll call on the vote, please.
Okay, um, trustee Liken?
Hi.
Trustee Lanfier?
Hi.
Trustee Stetser?
No.
Trustee Keating?
No.
Mayor Plummer?
No.
Motion fails.
Before we close this out, I would like to make a motion that we have a survey done to start initiating this process of the entire parcel. So we can help to find where those 10 acres are and where the DPW boundaries are.
Seconded.
Okay, brought it back for discussion. Oh, yes, Lily?
Thank you. Would we want to, wish to discuss at another meeting, which firm we would be sending out this request for bid? Or is this something that you would have the, our village designated engineering firm do?
Well, we have Scott Harder. I mean, I was thinking probably of Scott, Scott Harder because he's, he's familiar with the property.
That's, that, that is my question, whether you would.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I have to say.
Yeah.
I don't know that Scott will do the survey, but he will certainly have people who would do the survey for him.
Yeah, he, he's the resource person really for us to enable that process.
A quick question, is, would this be something we need to budget for this upcoming budget cycle then? Or is it included in some of the services that we already have Scott on your table?
Or is it just to get an estimate?
We'd have, we'd get an estimate for the survey. You know, we would talk to Scott about it. What does the take? We can, you know, bring it back to the board, you know, that kind of thing. Dan, you had your hand up on something?
No, no, I didn't.
Oh, okay. Yes, okay. Justin?
Um, yeah, I'm just, so a survey, I could see being done for the boundaries, the parcel, which I don't really think are necessarily in dispute here. It sounds like really what we're trying to establish is where is the DPW part versus where is the, the dedicated parkland part? So I was just wondering, you know, in terms of the, the skills that we're looking for here, is it really a survey to start out? Or is it somebody who's, I don't know, like a landscape architect or something like that to have some ideas, which we, we could then survey with some more precise boundaries?
I, yeah, okay, Jeff? Yes?
I think you got to start with a survey so you know exactly where things are. And I, then, then Justin, I'm with you. I don't know if it's a landscape, landscape architect or a municipal planner who will look at this and say, you got 10 acres. This can be the 10 acres, this is a proposal for 10 acres of parkland. This is a proposal for the rest. Or the municipal planner may say, you need slightly more land for the DPW than what's been left over. We suggest the following. But I think you're going to need somebody to guide you through what's to do with what's actually there.
Thank you. Good point. Okay, so there's a motion made. Oh, yeah. Oh, Dorothea, I see the hand. Thank you.
I'm sorry, real quick, I wanted to chime in. If an estimate comes in for doing the survey and it's under, it's in my approval zone of $1,000, I can go ahead and authorize that. If it's over that, we can bring it to the village board and get it authorized and we can move this along in a timely manner if the board is good with it. So we can move this along in a timely manner if the board is good with that option. Oh, we have 2,000?
That's right, it is 2,000.
Oh, I'll spend the 2,000. No, I'm just saying, if the board is good with that option, that moves us along and I hope sells the situation quicker. So we don't have to automatically come back.
Okay, thank you for that. Yes, Renee?
So it probably wouldn't make sense then to try to make that path along the DPW area there that Justin and Lily were talking about that is currently used. Should we wait until after the survey then to come up with a, a temporary solution for that as well? Because I, I came into that thinking, oh, that seems a good compromise, but after hearing from DPW, it sounds like there's, that, that area is still a little problematic. So would it make sense to not problem solve for that little section of the trail until after the survey?
Agreed.
Okay, sweet.
All right. Okay, so there's a motion before the board?
Did you read the motion again, please? I'm sorry.
The motion was to have a survey conducted of the whole parcel related.
Devin, if, if less than 2,000.
If less than 2,000, the clerk will authorize the survey to proceed. If it's over 2,000, she'll bring the estimate back to the board for discussion or an approval.
As amended, okay. Roll call, please.
Okay, trustee Liken?
Hi.
Trustee Lanfear?
I.
Trustee Keating?
Hi.
Trustee Stetser?
I.
Mayor Plummer?
I.
Motion passes.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Oh, I think this really was a good discussion and, and it's important to, to vet all of, all of the concerns for everybody. Yes, Steve, one, one last thing?
I will, I will, if, if the board wishes, I will reach out to Scott and ask him if he's willing to do it or if he can recommend somebody for us to do it.
Okay, yeah, you and I can get with that, you know, tomorrow, we can, we can work on that. That's great. Thanks so much for that. Appreciate that. All righty.
I'd like to propose a five minute break. We're at about the two hour mark.
Oh, that's a great idea. Is there a motion to adjourn for five minutes, please?
I'll make a motion. Whatever, am I motioning or seconding?
I think you're seconding.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Uh, trustee Stetser?
I.
Trustee Keating?
Hi.
Trustee Liken?
Hi.
Trustee Lanfear?
I.
Mayor Plummer?
Hi. Okay, five minutes. Thanks, everybody.
Eight twenty-eight.
Just you and me, Jeff.
We can get a lot done.
Let's get through the rest of this agenda real quick.
All right, let's go.
Are those cookies, Steve? What is that?
It's a cookie.
Chocolate chip cookie?
Homemade chocolate chip cookies, yes.
You're not allowed to wave food at the rest of the crowd. That's not proper.
Oh, I thought it was talking to me. I was like, why are you pulling me in? Don't make trouble.
There, I won't tease anymore.
That's better. You will be written up for such actions.
Just have to listen to me chew now.
Yeah.
Okay, we're back. I make a motion to reopen the meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Okay, trustee Stetser?
I.
Trustee Lanfear?
I.
Trustee Liken?
Hi.
Trustee Keating? I'm not sure Dan is back yet.
Oh, okay, well, we still have a quorum.
Okay, motion pa, oh, Mayor Plummer?
I.
Motion passes.
Okay, um, next up, let's see, where are we here? We skipped, okay. The language for the cannabis referendum?
Real quick, I'm sorry, Mayor Plummer, there's a question that popped in afterwards and relates to the previous subject. So I'll just read it real quick. So we can move on. It's just thanking, thanks to the board for taking the time to hear the various thoughts, perspectives, insights, recommendations on the matter of access to public lands. The safety concerns expressed by the DPW staff versus pushing the matter to the side because of the time it takes for thorough discussion expressed by one board member, that was Mr. Pierce.
Okay. Thanks, Aaron.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for reading that. Yeah, next up is the, excuse me, the cannabis referendum. Dorothy, just, you would just want to give an update before we sort of talk about the language, just where we are with sort of setting things up for the election? That would be helpful.
Um, the referendum vote has been scheduled for February 8th. So that will be here at Village Hall. I've worked with the Board of Elections. One of the questions, before you take a look at the proposal, the questions is, and it's just, is the board familiar with what an affidavit vote is?
Why don't you explain also for the public, just for anybody listening, I think it's helpful.
An affidavit vote is, villages in particular, when they run their own elections, don't accept affidavit votes. When the county runs the elections, they do accept an affidavit vote, which is if a person moves into a municipality within a short time and they haven't re-registered to be in that district, they can present evidence at the board and sign an affidavit saying that they're a member of that district and they'll allow them to vote.
So my understanding, just to clarify, just to interject, sorry to interrupt, but so they, they are actually a registered voter. It's just that they've moved.
Correct, they've moved.
Okay.
Or there's something pertaining to it, but this allows them to actively vote in that. In this case, in the permissive referendum or in an election. So as I said, typically, it's not something villages allow, probably because we don't have the resources to check it. But with the county, they can go back and check and make sure everything's proper. The question was posed to me, since this is technically a village election, whether we wanted to accept affidavit votes. My thought is you would, given that it has been the past history, since you turned it over to the county, the county will be helping us with this process. Even though they're saying it's a village election, I need to provide them that answer. And we thought it best to take that to the board to ask your opinion on this. So here you go. So are you willing to accept an affidavit vote for the permissive referendum?
We may not even get any, but you know, just in case there's the possibility, I guess, is really what we're talking about here. Yes, Justin?
Is there any cost associated with processing affidavit votes?
No, it's a piece of paper. It's just time, I'm sure they can check the register, show that they moved the license. I think there's steps they take to make sure it's all proper.
Yeah, they vet the vote. Yes, Dan?
I just said even if there were, still before.
Okay. Yes, Lily?
This isn't about the affidavit, this is just generally about the election. When will it go up on the village website and from, and from what time to what time will the, will the?
We're going to be getting to that, yeah. We're going to be covering all that. Yeah, thank you.
Almost there.
That's great. Yeah, we just want to.
When is, when is the right time to talk about the language of the referendum?
We're moving to that. If I can just get a motion.
Giving you background.
To accept the affidavit vote and then.
I'll make a motion to accept the affidavit votes.
Okay, we have a second from Renee.
Okay, roll call. Trustee Stetser?
I.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, I.
Trustee Liken?
Hi.
Trustee Keating?
Hi.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, I.
Motion passes. Okay, um, the next part, as I said, February 8th, the election will be conducted between noon and nine as any other election is done. And we'll be posting all that. I did send legal notice to the paper for the initial part, which will appear this Thursday. I will be sending another legal notice out on, soon as we get this all tied up and accept the language to appear in the following week's paper. So we'll be starting that process. And then this goes to where I need the proposed questions approved as Jeff provided for the board.
Okay, so I, I want to ask questions about this. So Jeff, did you write this or did this come from the state?
Dan, for, as a suggestion from NICO.
Okay, so here's my challenge with it. One, we have already opted out. Okay, so it seems strange to then vote on opting out. It, and it also feels strange that if you were saying yes to, that you wanted dispensaries, you would vote no. And if you were saying yes, you wanted can, cannabis consumption establishments, you would vote no. I would vote, I would edit that we flip this because we've already opted out. The question then should be, should the village opt in to allowing retail cannabis dispensaries, et cetera? Should the village of Pittsburgh opt in to allowing onsite cannabis consumption? It just makes more logical sense.
Jeff, are there requirements about how we have to write this? Or can, I understand what Dan's suggesting.
I don't think so. I don't know of any requirements. Just have a referendum, you, you know, the language is ours.
Yeah, that's how you had always explained it to us in the prior meetings. So, because I think it'll be super confusing to people to say, if you want dispensaries, vote no. And if, if you don't want dispensaries, vote yes. Like that, it's, that's going to be really confusing to people.
So, so then the first one would read something like, shall the village of Pittsburgh opt in to allow?
Yeah.
Detail, okay, I see where you're going with that. And then the second one would be, shall the village of Pittsburgh opt in again to allow?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, because we've already opted out.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. It's like we're opting out to opt out.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yes, Jeff?
I think trustee Liken had his hand up before me.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
I'll defer to Jeff, though. He's, he's probably more, uh, he's more knowledgeable on these topics.
Doubt it. Um, if you were trying to simplify this, I wouldn't mess around with opt out or opt in. I would just say, shall the village of Pittsburgh allow retail cannabis, blah, 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 and the first and the second.
Great.
That's even better, better editing.
Clear.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, yes, Justin?
I guess, so my, my question here is that I, I agree that the wording that we're talking about is more clear. My understanding is that this is a measure that is by statute, subject to the, the local law that we passed to opt out is the thing that's subject to permissive referendum. And if it's worded this way, the way the NICO suggests, it seems like we're voting on the local law, which is consistent with my understanding of, of this process. Whereas if we change it to say, do we want these, these forms of retail? Then to me, it, it goes away from the, the way that this, this process is structured. So I, I guess I'm just not 100% sure that that's the way they want us to do it. And it might be, there might be a reason that I come to this.
And, and NICO is just a suggestion. They're, they're not a.
Yeah, they, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know that it changes it either way. Yes, Jeff? Yes, sure.
But why don't we run by this proposed change by NICO and make sure they're okay with it. If they are, then we can just go forward with it. If they, if it has to be the way it is presently drafted now, then it has to be that way. But I, I don't, I do not believe we're going to hear that from NICO.
Yeah, so, so then I would propose that we make the edit. And I'll, I'll put that up for a proposal. Do you want me to read it again? Or did we get it?
Here, here's what I would suggest. I would suggest that provided that, that NICO finds the redrafted language acceptable, that will be the language posed at the referendum. If they do not, it will be the language as it presently is written. Is that too complicated?
Well, I, I still, i- if their answer is no, I still am going to want to talk about it.
Okay.
I, I don't want to just immediately default to this thing that I think many of us agree is flawed and confusing.
Confusing, yeah.
Dorothy, how much? Where you're going with that, let's just, let's just try it and get it the right way. And if they say no, then let's talk about it.
Hang on, we've, we've got a timeframe here. Hang on.
No, we have a timeframe. I really need board to make a decision tonight. We need to get this out to the public. The clock is ticking. We are less than a month away. I can't wait for another board meeting. I need to get this published with the language. I want to get this up on the website, Facebook. We really, I'm going to request authorization, send out a mailing to our homes, letting them know that this is taking place. What I'm saying, Dan, is no time. I'd have to call a special meeting, but I really needed to tell them tomorrow morning at the Board of Elections.
Yeah, and we're going to approve the language the way it is now. I, I just, just don't want to default to bad language if we can help it. So, so we're going to give you language that we think is right.
Okay, I have a third suggestion. I have a third suggestion that we approve in sequential order. The first one where you don't use the opt in or out, that whether you allow, you know, simply to allow.
Sure.
We also, in the case that it is not recommended or accepted by NICOM, for whatever reason, that if there's some legal issue with it, then we default to the opt in.
Yep.
Language. And the remaining part of the motion would be that we would keep the language as recommended by NICOM, but we could essentially, conditionally approve all three, based on NICOM's recommendation and response going forward from a legal standpoint.
Makes sense to me.
It's, it's complicated, it sounds, but I, I think it kind of covers our bases because of the timeframe.
Yep.
So, did I?
I'll, I'll make that motion if you. Okay, do, do you want me to go through it in specifics?
No. Dorothea, do you have, do you have it?
I got it.
Everybody's clear on what we're doing? I, I understand what we're doing. Can you just have Dan or Dorothea read out what our preferred first choice is, just so we're clear?
Okay, preferred first choice, shall the Village of Pittsburgh allow retail cannab, this is proposal one, a question. Shall the Village of Pittsburgh allow retail cannabis dispensaries from locating and operating within the boundaries? Uh, it shouldn't be from.
Do you speak, locate, allow them to be located?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Shall the Village of Pittsburgh allow retail cannabis dispensaries located in and operated within the boundaries of the Village of Pittsburgh? Um, and proposal two, shall the Village of Pittsburgh allow onsite cannabis consumption establishments located in and operating within the boundaries of the Village of Pittsburgh?
That's option one. That's option one.
Yeah.
And then option two would be, shall the Village of Pittsburgh opt in, you know, with the remaining language staying? And shall the Village of Pittsburgh, again, opt in for, you know, onsite consumption? So, and then the last one would be, you know, editorially a stat, you know, that the language remains as originally proposed. So, the, the motion before us is to approve all three conditionally, based on the response of NICOM. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think I understand the, the motions now, and I appreciate the attempt here. As I'm thinking about it, I, I feel like the suggestions that we've come up with are a little bit too far from, I, I think they're more clear, uh, but I think they're too far from the way the process actually works. So I guess I'm not in favor of, of these changes. I would go with NICOM.
How does the process, I think what you're about to argue is that it's about a law, and it's not. People are voting yes or no to dispensaries, and we've just made it a lot clearer to them.
My, my argument is essentially that. I, I think it is about a law. It's a complicated process. And I think that by going away from the fact that we're voting yes or no to a local law, we're losing some of the nuances that are actually important here. So I'm not in favor of it. I don't mind, you know, this going up for vote. I, I just wouldn't do it personally.
Yeah, I guess, um, one of the reasons why we came up with these three options is that to make sure that it isn't moving far afield from the intention. And so that's why we are vetting it with NICOM and doing it in this manner. Because I, I hear what both of you are saying. You know, Dan, the case for clarity is, is shall I say, clear? And, um, you know, the concern that we all had, gee, is this the right way to go? We need to talk to NICOM, is being addressed by you. So I think it kind of covers both ends of the spectrum with that.
It, it's not really covering what Justin is asking us to. Justin is asking it to be much more about a law and less about a direct vote of allowing dispensaries or consumption establishments.
So you're, you even have a problem with this language as, as NICOM even presented?
No, 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 not at all. I have a problem with what Justin, the angle that Justin's taking.
No, the question, that is my question to Justin. I mean, this is a question that, that came from the New York Commission of, these questions were formulated by the New York Commission of Mayors, based on the adoption of our law.
I have, I have no problem with what NICOM is suggesting. I, it's not, it's not perfect, but I, I think I would just go with that, rather than trying to wordsmith our own thing. Because this is, you know, it's unfortunate that this is so much about a complicated process in law, but I don't think that we necessarily get around that with the suggestions, to me. But the board can do whatever it wants to.
Well, I think we're trying to make a, a, a good decision for our community. Yes, Dorothea, your hands up?
Yes, we have a comment from the public. Okay, David Ferris says, the proposed resolution reads as though it was intended where a municipality opted in, and then the citizens did a referendum to vote.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, did you have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay, just, just, you know, wanted to, okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second? Hello? Okay, we have a second, Renee. Thank you.
Roll call, please. Trustee Lanfair?
Lanfair, aye.
Trustee Liken?
No.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
You just left me out.
Oh my God, trustee Stetser.
That's all right. Um, aye.
And, um, Dorothea, I, I've captured all this in an email. I'm gonna send it to you and copy all the trustees, each of the options with the wordsmithing precise.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, thanks for that. So I also would just like to make a motion because we, oh, Jeff? Yes.
Dorothea, are you gonna send that off to NICOM?
Uh, I'll send it to you, because apparently you already talked to someone on the language, I think.
No, I didn't. I just got it from a, their, their board.
Oh, okay.
So just.
Yes.
If you could just ship it out to, to Wade, that'd be great.
Okay. I'll talk to Wade.
That's great. He lives for this stuff. Yeah, also, Dorothea had mentioned, you know, we want to do a mailing to our households with, you know, the referendum questions. Um, and, you know, the information about, um, you know, where it's gonna be held, the times, all of that. So, um, I, you know, she's already been authorized, you know, to put everything together for the election, but there's also, uh, we hadn't spoken about the mailing at that time, and we're thinking it would just be essentially an oversized postcard, you know, with the information for people. So I would just like to make a motion to authorize the clerk to facilitate the election moving forward, including notification by mail.
Yes, and can we see the copy of that notification?
Sure.
Can we approve and edit that copy?
Yeah, you can submit your edits, of course. But we need, you know, we need to just turn this around. It's gonna be pretty basic, just, this is what we're looking for. So, you know, there's a timeframe here.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Roll call vote, trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, great. Um, anything else before we leave this item? Anything else for us, Dorothea?
No, um, we're just gonna get notification out, let everybody know that this referendum is taking place.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thanks for your work on this, to show this. It's a lot of moving parts. Okay, next item up is going to be item, agenda item 10, establishing a sewer reserve. And I guess this is essentially an update. Jeff, you may want to just weigh in, and you know, you've been working with Scott Harder on this.
So as you all recall from the last audit, the controller was not thrilled with the unreserved fund, the amount of the unreserved funds in the sewer fund. We have always had that higher reserve. Basically, if there, in the event there would be a siphon failure, we could get our hands on the money quickly. There are other potential sewer failures out there. Uh, Scott and I are developing an amount to propose that we move into a special reserve fund. And when we have that amount, it will come to you with a proposal about how we get that into the reserve fund. Basically, the rules are, if, if you want to get money quickly, get out, get it out quickly, you have to put it in slowly. When I say slowly, I mean, they could ask me, subject to a permissive referendum, when you move money into a reserve, repair reserve fund. But I'll have all the exact details for the board. When Scott and I come up with the proposal, rather, Scott comes up with the proposal for an amount. And then we'll have a complete proposal to run by the board.
Okay. Thank you. And just, just to, you know, kind of fill you in, we have, we're, keep mentioning sewer cyclones. We have three sewer cyclones, Zach, am I correct, that run underneath the canal? And that, yeah, and so, um, you know, my thought is, just running it by the group, if you have all three fail at once, then you have a catastrophic earthquake, something, that's a call to FEMA. So really what Scott Harder is doing, um, and we're just using the case of a siphon, because that'd be a pretty big deal, would be to just take a look at what it would be to, to actually replace or look at one siphon. You know, that, that was probably more realistic in terms of risk. I have a question, Zach, and I think, yeah, Jeff, you, we were talking about this. Are the cyclones, do they run independently and serve different areas of the village, or are they somehow connected?
Um, they, they, they connect downstream. So once they cross the canal, everything kind of filters back towards the same place where it connects with Purewater, which is the county sewer system. So there are three independent systems throughout the village.
That, 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 that's great. That, that was my understanding, but I think it's just helpful, you know, to, to know that. Yes, Lily?
Uh, you said that, um, I have to check and make sure I was off mute, sorry. You said that it would be then, uh, subject to permissive referendum, Jeff, as far as moving the funds? So are we talking about in the next village election, potentially having this added to that, to the ballot for a permissive referendum to move the funds at that time? If you're more decisive.
I don't know. I'm not quite sure how the timing is going to work out. And I really have got to nail down the process completely, but I know that it's going to involve a referendum.
Given the cost of, 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 of election, I was just wondering if there was a, if it was feasible to combine with the next village election, if that would be feasible, as a cost saving measure.
The question is, is more, that question is more for Dorothea in terms of what will the tolerance of the controller's office be in terms of how we, how soon we get that in there?
Yeah, Dorothea had her hand up. Yes, Dorothea?
Um, the only reason we would conduct the permissive referendum, Lily, is if we had the public bring us a petition. In this case scenario, the board decided to go ahead to go to permissive referendum. We wouldn't have to do that unless the public demanded we go to permissive referendum to, to, to do this. So that would, I, I, that would be a stretch. I'm not gonna say they wouldn't, but really, we're not, we're moving it as a, in a savings account for them. It's not like we're spending it willy-nilly. So I don't foresee that being a big issue. It is a possibility, but that would only be if the public petition us to do it.
Yeah, and, and exactly, and this is sort of a usual procedure for a lot of municipalities. Not, I can't even think of a time that where I've seen it actually go to a permissive referendum, you know, where there has been a petition, just in terms of my own experience, is extremely rare. So, yeah, because the referendum, for example, that we're having now is a mandatory referendum, because the board, um, you know, resolved to hold this referendum, rather than potentially get a petition for a permissive one. So that's the distinction there. Yeah. Any, any other comments on this? Okay, well, thanks for your good work, Jeff, with this, and to Scott, too. Next up, Black History Month coming up in February, and I believe we have someone here to.
Yes, we have a Ms. Doyle here, representing the application or the thing, so I'll allow her to talk. Ms. Doyle, you're free to talk.
Okay, um.
And.
Thank you very much. And we are here this evening to propose that the Village Hall host a sign for the month of February for Black History Month, saying that Pittsburgh supports black history. And we're proposing to donate the sign to the village, so there'd be no cost to the taxpayers to host the sign. And I think that you got a copy of the proposed sign, which hopefully is in your packet for this evening?
Yes, it is. Yep, yeah, it is. Hi Kathy, hi Toddie. Thanks for waiting.
Thank you.
I know.
Not a problem. It was very interesting.
Lots going on in the village. And it's, you said, you're using the word sign, or is it a banner?
It's a, it's a three by six banner.
Oh, banner, okay.
Yep, so it will, um, you know, so that we're, and we're, like I said, we're, or like Kathy said, we will be donating it to the village.
So this is similar to, um, the other, uh, the, the pride flag that was donated. You know, the, the idea that it was donated, and we would vote whether or not to, to accept that donation. Okay. Well, I think it's a lovely idea.
Yes.
I think it's great, and I love the look of the banner. You guys did a really great job. Any other?
Thank you.
Any other thoughts from the board?
Really supportive. It's terrific work. Did you design the banner, or did, is this existing artwork?
President designed it. I'm not that creative, so I had, I had somebody else to do it for.
It was designed locally?
Yeah, it was, it's another. Yeah, it was, um, it's another Pittsburgh parent.
Oh. That's great.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
And so, um, then, uh, you know, I would certainly entertain a motion, uh, that this, uh, banner, we accept this donation, and that the banner would be hung up for Black History Month, which is the month of February.
So moved.
Okay, um, is there a discussion? Oh, Lily? Yeah.
Thank you. Did somebody second it, and then we can do a discussion? I, I apologize. I didn't get the, the last packet printed out, and so I can't, I, I really can't get a visual on the, on the banner. Would it be possible for you to put that up so that the public could see it as well?
Yep.
On the screen? Is there a way that somebody could?
Yeah, I think Dorothea is gonna try to do that for, are you able to do that? It, it is also online as well. The public has had access, but Dorothea, are you able to do that?
If not, I can.
Or maybe Dan could?
That'd be great, because all I have is.
Yes, I'm getting it right now.
Oh, Dorothea's got it. Okay.
I'm getting.
I just got it.
I have the unveiling.
Okay, great. I just got it. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it looks.
So was that motion seconded?
Seconded.
Okay.
Yep.
So that we could discuss that I seconded it.
Um, do, I was recalling that we had to accept it in a separate motion, and then decide to, um, to display it the last time we did this as a separate motion. Do we not have to do, is, if we can do it all in one, that would be super efficient. But I just wanted to make sure we're doing it correctly. Jeff, are we within the proper bounds of how the motion was made? Can we accept and decide the same? Jeff, you're still on mute.
Okay, is everybody able to see it? I, I can't get it full.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Yep, I'll keep scrolling.
Scrolling just so people can see it.
So hit the zoom out.
Oh, zoom out? There we go. Where would that be?
Do it's zoomed.
Yep, I made it bigger.
Yeah, upright. Upward, see the little numbers? See the two arrows? And then it says 92, 96. Ah, there we go.
Okay. Oh. Keep going. Nope.
Oh, I'm seeing something.
That changes the page.
Yeah, that changes the page. I'm not seeing.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not seeing it. Um, I'm sorry. Apparently, I'm not very good at.
You and.
Right there. Oh, there's zoom. Right there, you got it. You get the pull down menu, go up. Go to the zoom, and then do the. You got the pull down menu. There you go. I, I. Then which one do they, does she hit? Which one?
Zoom to page level.
Zoom to page level. Okay, she's.
Or fit width or fit height. There you go.
There we go. Perfect. See? Thank you, Dan.
Yeah.
Okay, so everybody has a, a look at the beautiful banner. So Mayor Plummer, the proposal is to hang it from the same place as the pride flag. Yes. Banner. Yeah. Okay. Sort of fit in that, that area. Yep. And, and did we get a response from Jeff? Did we? Hear whether we can do this all in one motion or do we need the accept?
I don't, I don't, it's probably cleaner to accept the gift and then do a motion to fly it.
Okay, so I'll, I'll amend my motion that, uh, I make a motion that we approve the donation of the banner for Black History Month.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Trustee Lanfier.
Lanfier, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkin.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, I make a motion that we hang the banner, uh, uh, on the porch of Village Hall, um, for the entire month of February to. Celebrate Black History Month. Um. I guess that's it.
I'll second.
Okay, ready for roll call? Um, Trustee Lanfier.
Lanfier, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Well, thank you Kathy and Tati for, and to everybody who put in the hard work on this. It looks great.
Um, can, can I have a follow up request for Kathy and Tati, which is to, um. Educate us on who the images are on there, um, so that we may publicize that.
Yeah, if you could send in sort of the legend of, you know, of, of everybody on there.
We will do that.
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah, just send order to Dorothea and then we'll make sure it's, it's disseminated.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, really exciting. Thank you.
Okay, next item, um, our board meeting's schedule.
Uh, did we miss one?
Oh, what did I leave out?
An escrow account for seventy-five Monroe.
Oh, you are right. Why don't we go back right up to that? Thank you. You know what? I, I accidentally checked it off because usually I check off, I, I checked it too many times. Okay, the escrow account then for seventy-five Monroe. Thanks for the catch, Lily. Okay. Let me scroll back up. Dorothea, is there anything you want to say about that? I know we've been kind of.
Um, this issue came up because the Planning and Zoning Board has requested an estimate for the site plan. Review from TY Lynn. And for that review to take place. We need to have the escrow available for seventy-five Monroe to fund, to pay for that review from TY Lynn. Since our building inspector won't be conducting that. Um, with doing that, we realized that there was an outstanding reserve previously that was established, or escrow, I'm saying the wrong word, apologize. Um, and there was outstanding funds in our accounting owed to the village at that time that were not received. So in reviewing that situation, we reached out to Dan Spitzer. Since that outstanding amount was handed over to him for collection or to figure out how to resolve that. That money owed. And we have gotten a full accounting of that and the question to the board. Resolves around interest between the last accounting of that till now that tech. May or may not be owed. Dan doesn't feel, he went both ways, did he not, Lisa, that possibly we're owed it, we're not owed it. It was, it's very confusing. As to the time the establishment of the reserve and if that was anticipated that they would have late fees or interest on outstanding amounts. It seemed easier all the way around to settle the matter with seventy-five Monroe so we can keep moving things forward for the village just to waive. Any possible outstanding interest from that time frame. Does that make sense, what I'm trying to say? It got really complicated there.
Just like going forward, just to resolve it, you know, just to say, let's get everybody caught up. We want, you know, they want to move forward. They want to work with the boards. The, the outstanding interest is less than, I think, two thousand dollars. You know, it's like nineteen hundred and ninety-eight or something. Um, I just think sort of in good faith, if we just waive the interest, let's just get them back in, in the loop here. Um, so we can move forward. They can reestablish the escrow account. Uh, going forward because we, we are going to need additional escrow. Um, that, that's my takeaway, you know, it's, it's.
Can we?
Two thousand dollars.
I wonder if we can use some of the money set aside from the, um. Uh, what was the firm in Buffalo who we haven't been using? Um, because we haven't had need, but it's budgeted for and it's clearly budgeted for seventy-five Monroe. Can we use those funds?
For what?
To, to, to fund this escrow.
We don't fund the.
We don't fund it.
The, the applicant does. Mark Ford, this is, this, yeah, this was their escrow, an escrow account actually established years ago. Um, because going forward, when, you know, they pay the consulting fees, they pay additional fees. That we, the village does not incur. They were in arrears on, uh, refund, refunding. And funding or funding the escrow account going forward. So, um. This is the remainder of their debt that they have owed for a number of years, uh, going back to two thousand fifteen, it looks like. So. Um, the entire, entire amount that they actually owed is four thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars to bring, you know, to bring our escrow account current. And then they have to fund it again going forward for the TY Lynn. Uh, um, project potentially. So the actual amount is four thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars, as I said, but because they are in arrears, we have charged them interest. So, which brings up the amount to six thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. And so all we are saying is, let's just clear the decks. Let's have them pay the original amount. We'll waive the interest, which is nineteen hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And sixty-six cents. We'll just in good faith, they're working with the boards, they're trying to move forward. I think it's just kind of not a bad thing to do. Yes, Lily.
Thank you. May I suggest a compromise to that and just make it a round figure of five thousand? And have them reimburse us to five thousand dollars that we've been in arrears for the past six years.
For a long time.
For a long time.
Yeah, for a while.
And they, you know, they, they owed it and they didn't pay it. So I think that rather than letting them totally off the hook. I, I real, a little accounting, a little accountability here. I think to round it off, to make a nice round figure of five thousand. To get in that escrow account and then have them put the, then that's to pay up, to get them. Ground zero. And then from there, they will put in whatever TY Lynn says is there, will be their fee going forward. Or, or the PCBA, would they be able to establish an amount that they feel comfortable? In an escrow account.
That, that was already adopted through, wasn't it a three thousand dollar amount, Dorothea? Oh, we can't hear you.
They had to keep a certain amount in there at all times.
I think it was three thousand sort of each time rolling.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you. Okay. Oh, now we can.
Okay, sorry about that. Button happy. Um, it was three thousand, as you said. I think this is something that the PCBA is working with Min. Mindy Zoglin on what is an appropriate amount for that escrow and going back and forth. And obviously. You know, not sure what the estimate is to review that site plan. It very well might be over three thousand dollars. So they'll work with them to get it funded properly and get it resolved. But for us right now, so we can move forward, we should clear this debt because I think that's just fair because it's outstanding.
My suggestion and my motion would be that we, uh, request that, um. I don't think they call themselves seventy-five Monroe for this project, but that, uh, they. Repay their debt and, uh, five thousand dollars would clear the debt.
And that we would move forward. Give the rest and we'll forgive the rest.
And we'll forgive the rest.
Okay, yeah, I'm good with that. Okay, we have a motion. Uh, is there a second? Hello?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please. Oh, there's a hand up. Yes, we're, yep.
Okay, we have a question from the public. Art Pierce is saying, able to provide a clear explanation why Village PCBA has requested TY Lynn to provide a review of estimate. What typically, what's this, this, I can't speak, what specifically is being asked to be reviewed and for what purpose? I can answer that. They asked for a site plan review to look at the site plan to make sure it's meets the village code and criteria.
And that's well within their, their purview parameters to do.
Yes, it is.
And I think it's appropriate. It's such a large project.
Clearly, and also we have no influence over that.
Yeah, it's, it's an independent board. Absolutely. Yep.
Okay, ready for roll call, of course. And we're getting more comments.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Peggy Carabares, will this escrow account be used going forward with consultants for PCBA and. The HOB Historic Preservation Board, should both boards be consulted as to what will continue to be in the escrow account? Um, I think those will be handled with their attorneys at that time as to what they need.
Yeah, and I believe you referred to that earlier. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's up to the boards.
Okay, I'll try roll call vote one more time. Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfier.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okey doke. Okay, now jumping back down to the board meeting's schedule.
Correct.
We have called that up. So, um, yeah, we were all talking about, um, just, you know, the efficiencies of meetings and when they're being held and the sequence. Um, of, you know, when the boards meet. Um, and I know, Dorothea, you can speak, speak to this. Um, you and, um. I think Susan helped put together.
Yes.
Plan and reach out to other boards and.
Yep.
That, so.
Um, as me and Susan were looking at the calendars, we had all the boards through. As we went to go put them on the calendar, we realized there's a ton of overlap and it's really not. I don't think it's conducive to the public to have two or three village board meetings in a week. It's a lot of time tied up. And it's a lot of on staff time as well. And I've run into this a few times since I've taken. Handling all the boards right now and we automatically had this happen this week. I have three meetings this week, you know, special meetings aside, that's going to happen, but we really. I think long ago, the village has established that HBV was going to meet this week, village board, planning, zoning, each, you know, and village board. So we really needed to get that scheduling down again. So what we did is look at that and the suggestion came from Steve. And I believe Jeff, you might have commented on this as well, that the HBV should go. After the Planning and Zoning Board, that really the Planning and Zoning Board should go first and then things go to the HBV board. So it made it smoother for the application process for applicants. So when we looked at the calendar, that's what we did. We put PCBA first. We did the village board in its normal timeframe. As we were looking at this. Conflict started really occurring with the different meeting days. And what we really wanted to do is move everybody to a Thursday meeting. This makes great sense on the calendar. We run into less holidays. It's just very smooth. We can always say our board meetings are held on a Thursday. With presenting this to the two other boards, PCBA, um, the. Comments I've received from the chair is overall, they're accepting of the plan. They're good to go. They're going to discuss it on the nineteenth. I don't see them having a problem with it. They're looking forward. HBV, the only problem they had is they really didn't, Thursday didn't work for their members. We booked it alternate days, but they preferred Monday. So they would still be on a Monday, but they were good going later in the month. So this brings it to the village board and our request of you is to move from your Tuesday night to Thursday night so we can somehow. We can start establishing a streamlined meeting schedule. So that's why I was saying, don't set the eighth. The, or the tenth right now, I'd rather we have to have this discussion. So that's what I'm looking from the village board so we can complete this process, update our website. And reflect these dates that the village board meetings will be now conducted on a Thursday. And I would. Suggest this to the board because I don't know about you, um, meeting, after a meeting the next morning is very difficult. So it really seems better if we have these four or five hour meetings and we get up and it's Friday and the week is over. So.
The next two days are very difficult.
Yes, it does. So that's my suggestion to the board. I thank Susan for all her hard work in putting this together. Um, obviously we'd give you new calendar of dates moved off by that two days to go to Thursday.
Um, I'd also like to mention another thing. There's, um, other board meetings that are held on Tuesdays, you know, like the school board or sometimes, you know, the town. So, um, sometimes, you know, the public is sort of torn between attending all these different meetings on the same night and how do you do that? Um, and I think it, it will allow for, you know, uh, more people to be able to meet up on a Thursday and tune in on a Thursday. Um, also, I can say, you know, just, you know, being in office for the time I've been in, um, many times when we come in, you know, after a weekend. There may be a crisis. Mondays don't always, you know, aren't always so smooth. Maybe people are out, you know, somebody's got COVID, somebody tests, you know, we're always tested. On Sunday night and Monday morning before we come in. So, um, you know. Things can become quite complicated on a Monday. This gives us, I think, enough lead time. Before Thursday to make sure the packets are all together, everything's distributed properly. You know, we've taken care of whatever crisis kind of hit first thing in the early part of the week. Um, and just really sets us up for a more streamlined meeting. Yes, Zach?
I believe the copper leaf is open Thursday evenings also after.
Good point.
May I second this?
Um, I also would like to point out, your packet would still come out to you the Friday before, so that gives you more time to review your packet. So it, it really is just productivity across the board. I will tell you, last week I had to put out three packets in the same week. This happened in December. It's, it's a lot to juggle. And if we at least get that week. Everything re-lined up, I think it'll be so much smoother and help with the process. I mean, it's not going to eliminate the double booking of a special meeting in a week, but. You know, those happen and we'll deal with them as they come up. But this does help streamline the process and clears it up. And I think it'll reflect better on the calendar and everything else.
And, you know, and I just want to, you know, give a shout out to Dorothea. She's handling, you know, all the boards, three meetings in a row. By the time she hits Wednesday, she's already beyond a forty hour week. You know, um, and this really will smooth things out, I think. Even, even if we, you know, when we do end up getting the, you know, a deputy clerk. But either way, I think this just so streamlines the process and also the sequence, you know, having the PCBA before the HBV.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that, that, because otherwise the applicant is thrown again into the next month. So again, I think.
It delays them.
Yeah. I think it, yeah, Renee.
So we all know that change is hard, um, and it's been on a Tuesday night for, I don't know, eight hundred years. How long have we been doing the, the Tuesday night? Um, getting the public, I am totally open to, um, weed stuff around, totally open to it. Um, how do we think the response from the, the public will be? And do we need to make that decision tonight or is there an opportunity to, to get, get a little bit of feedback?
Well, I, I think public change, as you said, is difficult, but we can help the public with the change. We've done that before when we went to virtual. We can post meetings on the news thing. We put them up on Facebook as it is. We send out the alerts with the agenda and the meeting times. We're, we're already doing that. So we are getting the best effort out there. And we'll continue to do that and we'll just keep pushing and notifying the public, obviously, as best we can to move this forward. The longer we delay, the longer it makes a mixed calendar. So I prefer to go sooner than later because we looked at deadlines and trying to get the other boards on. To move forward with this. Um. I, I agree. The schedule has been like this before I came. I didn't have input then, so I'm getting my input now. And really, it's really, just really came to light when we were putting this up on the calendar. I just don't see the public, you know, we're really asking a lot of our public to attend several meetings in a week. I think it's unfair. To really, I mean, one of the promotions right now, given COVID is family and we're pulling people away from their families and we should limit how many times a week we do that. And really giving them the opportunity to say, you know what, I can't, I'm going to miss two of these meetings. I want to go to this one. I don't think that's fair to those meetings either. So streamline it and we're getting a bunch of comments. And so I can share what we're getting and I'm sure, you know.
I'd also like to just add in, you know, we hold special meetings on different days and different times all the time and we have the public show up. I mean, I think. You know, it is a change, but I think, um, I think it can be a successful one and successfully administered. I think this is a. You know, I support this, you know, this is an administrative decision. Yeah.
Okay, I'll read the comments. Uh, what is being proposed is that multiple.
Renee, it's a really good question and thank you for raising it.
If what is being proposed is that multiple boards meet on the same evening? No, I think Mr. Pierce is misunderstanding me. Correct? Save the time will be different time so that the public can attend each meeting, excluding. The public from attending all meetings and hearings. No, it'd be. Every third, what I was hoping is every Thursday of the month would be a board meeting, whether it's village board, planning, or HBV. Where two boards would be Thursdays, one would be Monday. Um, what Peggy Carabares, Dorothea, what Monday would be HBV meeting? They'll be meeting the third Monday of the month. Uh, our peers, including the public from attending all, if. Our peers, excluding the public from attending all, if all at the same time? No, we would never do that. I'm totally against two boards meeting on the same night and I'm also against boards meeting on a holiday. I don't think it's fair. And I also believe no board should ever meet on a Friday, we all have social lives. And our peers thanks me for the clarification. There you go.
You, you may have said this earlier, did, have all the other boards seen this calendar?
Yes, they have seen it.
Okay.
I have support from HBV, I have, I have support from PCBA, they're going to talk about it at the meeting on the 19th, but Justin has already polled all his members, everybody seems to be on board with the proposal.
Right, so nobody will be blindsided if we do this?
Nobody is blindsided, that's why I wanted to make sure I had all my ducks in the row before I presented to you.
Yeah, it was presented to the other boards first before bringing it back to this board.
Awesome.
Yep.
Now you have to like get us out of the habit if we decide to do this, we're going to show up on the wrong day.
I'll haunt you, you'll get my reminders. We'll make it happen, it'll be smoother and I think you'll feel better on a Thursday morning, Friday morning versus into a Wednesday morning after a meeting.
Yeah, it's been pretty pedal to the metal. So, so what's next, Dorothea?
If the board's good, if they're willing to accept this, they need to make a motion to accept the new proposed meeting schedule and move their meetings to Thursday.
Okay, there's, I'll make that motion, so moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, um, real quick, had a comment, Peggy Carabares says, when will the budget about meetings be? We're still working on that schedule, so that will be posted as that comes out. Okay, trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Trustee Lampier.
Hi.
Trustee Lightken.
Hi.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Thank you, motion passes. I'll get you up the new schedule of dates and get this all posted. Thank you so much for your support in this, we appreciate it. And I thank Susan again for her work and assistance in me with this.
Yeah, thank you, thanks to you both, thank you very much. Next item up, the COVID update.
Before, before we do this, I want to be careful that we're protecting the health status of our employees. So I don't mind talking about this in vague terms, but I don't think we should use specific names.
I think this is just an update about what's been going on.
But in general, we've done that a couple of times during this meeting and it was uncomfortable.
Okay.
Thanks.
Although, yep, all right. Dorothea, what do we want to say as a COVID update?
But we're trying. Staff is testing as symptoms or whatever appear, we have given test kits to employees, we, over the holidays, we had everybody test prior to coming back to make sure, you know, if they were with family and friends that we weren't inadvertently passing on COVID, which did filter out some issues. We've had, at one point, we had four different staff members out with COVID. We are slowly coming back now to 100%, we're hoping to maintain that. We are masking at all times when we're dealing with the public, with each other, within six feet. We're doing everything we know is possible, you know, encouraging coming into village hall, it doesn't matter vaccination status, everybody needs to be masked. We've gone back to the virtual meetings to hopefully get through the surge with planning, zoning. We gave them the option, they did agree for this month to go virtual to, again, keep, you know, try to keep everybody safe. We'll be looking at February as we go along as to what steps we need to take. This does affect the referendum vote. I'm proposing and I'm just going to insist the board do as we did with the general election, we'll be sending the staff home at noon. I will stay on during this process for the voting purposes so the public can come in one door and out the other door so we can keep the flow. And after we have that referendum, we'll have our cleaners come in and do a COVID court to sanitize the area, just so we don't inadvertently, again, spread any more disease than we need to. So anything you want to add, Mayor Plummer? Hoping I can.
Just, you know, everybody, every, everybody coming into the building takes their temperature every single day. And, you know, that's, that also has been helpful. No, thank you, and you've been very vigilant, Dorothea, we really appreciate it. And we also, by the way, are waiting, you know, the legislature just convened for their session in Albany and we're waiting to hear about the extension on virtual meetings. And the Nikon, last, last bullet that I have from Nikon is that they believe things will be extended into the spring, potentially through May, the option to do that. So that's, that's just.
Really not much more I can share on that and we'll keep the board, you know, appraised as we move forward, but I think we're pretty comfortable right now with the steps we've taken.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. Any other comments on that? Member items, anybody? Yes, Justin?
I thought, wait, I thought we had, I thought we had the plow thing.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Did I go over it?
No, we didn't do the plow, the naming of the plow.
Oh, I, I didn't see it, I'm sorry, I have an older agenda, that was me.
Jeff is raising his hand.
Yes, Jeff.
Do you still need me to hang around for, for this or do you, I'm happy to if you want.
Oh, I think we're good. We always need you, but I know the hour's coming.
No, no, I just didn't want to, I don't know you, me being on the dime if you don't need me.
Okay, thanks so much, Jeff, for, for your help tonight.
All right, everybody have a good night.
You too.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, bye-bye.
Oh, you know what, I have an older agenda, it wasn't on this one, I apologize for that. So the naming of the plow, yes, Dan?
So this can be quick, Lily, were you able to review the documentation? You hadn't seen it the last time, were you able to give it some good thought?
Yes.
Okay.
My turn.
So I'm proposing that we run a contest to, for school-aged children to be able to vote, to come up with names of the plows, the big one, the little one, and the DPW will be involved in the choice as well as the trustees as a way to engage younger people and have some fun and to personalize the people who are doing this incredible work around our village and make them more connected to the people that benefit from that. So I would propose a Google form, really pretty simple for people to submit things and then we look through all those things and we do social media campaigns and that kind of thing. And, you know, get the DPW involved, I think it'd be a lot of fun.
And that's something that you would set up?
Yeah, yeah, it's a simple Google form, name, age, address, submission.
And, and.
We might get some nonsense and so be it and then we'll.
Oh, we'll get some nonsense.
Yeah. And then we'll have a process to pick the winner in, in a fun way that is, it really involves the DPW.
Dan, are you, originally it was like maybe one plow and then I, I mucked up the works by saying, hey, let's focus on walkability by doing the little sidewalk samponi and, but now you're saying three.
Well, whichever equipment, Zach, what, what equipment is there? There's the big plow.
What do you want to have named?
Do we start with one, do we do three, do we do two? Sidewalk, plow.
We have four plows that go out in the regular, so we have the big plow, we have the one-ton, that's just a straight plate on the front of the truck, and we have a bobcat and a tow cab.
Great.
Actually, the big truck has two plows on it, it's got the wing plow on it also.
Well, those are the attachments, right?
And we'll need some pictures of these, right?
So, out of all, but there's four, four vehicles that can be named.
Four vehicles, five plows.
Great.
Four vehicles, five plows, okay. So maybe that's something that you can coordinate with Dan, who's honchoing this, you know, give like sort of the, maybe the pictures of them, the specs, you know, what they do.
A little bit about them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, what their sign is, you know.
What they like, yeah.
Yeah. Favorite Netflix movie.
There will be no swearing in it, Renee.
Okay.
Shall I make a motion or how do you want to do this?
Sure.
And, and, you know, we had talked last time, it doesn't have to be a sophisticated decaling of these things, we'll figure out whether, you know, once we decide on them, whether it's even painted on them or not, or whatever, we'll figure it out.
Whatever's on there is probably not going to last too long because they do get cleaned up pretty, so.
But it's fun for the season or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe paint, paint would be pretty simple and we could always touch it up.
Like a little stencil or something, maybe, I don't know.
So I'll make a motion to establish a contest to, for kids to name the plows.
So what age, what age range?
Any, any school-aged kid has that.
There we go.
Oh, boy.
Okay.
Any school-aged kid, all the way up to senior?
We'll get some interesting names.
You're asking for it now, no, that's fine.
I have a senior daughter.
Whatever, whatever you would like to do. Yeah, but she's all artsy, so she'll be respectful.
No, she won't.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion, is there a second?
Well, second.
Roll call, trustee Lampier.
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightken.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, we're going to have some fun. Thanks, Dan.
I suggest whoever names the plow or the piece of equipment takes care of care and feeding.
Takes care of all of that?
Maintenance and feeding of the plow or.
Walking the plow?
Yeah.
Yeah. Great, okay, um, now, member items.
Question?
Yes.
Will you guys need me for anything else tonight?
I think we're good, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, yeah, we'll catch up then, thanks again.
There was, there was also, there were more on the agenda that you missed.
You know, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the old.
The treasurer training is also on there.
Oh, I, you know, I apologize, I have the old agenda in front of me, so thank you for prompting me on that. Yeah, there, I would like to address that in an executive session and I'll get to that, but I would like to do member items first. Any member items from people? Yes, Justin?
Sure, just a brief one, I, so Dr. Jackie Abner reached out to me, she's a village resident and on the, the town environmental board. And she reached out about a grant opportunity from the National Environmental Education Foundation. They're rather large grants, they're between $50,000 and $100,000. So it seems like there might be quite a few possibilities with that. This particular one is called the 2022 Biodiversity Conservation Grant, Enhancing Pollinator Habitats. It's due February 17th and I'll just read the one sentence description. "Its habitat enhancement project should directly support the creation, restoration, remediation, improvement, and/or protection of habitats for important pollinator species such as butterflies, bees, bats, and more. Additionally, projects should incorporate community outreach and engagement activities designed to educate and empower the public to help enhance pollinator habitats." And so her suggestion was that since this is quite a large amount of money, that we would do something in conjunction with the town. We were thinking that perhaps their grant writer would write something. I don't know if we have somebody on our side who would, who would do that or jump in. If so, if we have somebody, then great. I was just thinking this might be a way that, you know, we can kind of just sign on to something and use resources that are out there. So we don't have a concrete plan yet. It seems to me that there are places where we could use some kind of a program like this and just wanted to get thoughts. I don't know if there are any logistical hurdles to signing on to a grant application with another municipality, maybe there's something that I'm missing, but just wanted to get thoughts and see if it's worth proceeding.
Well, a lot of times, I love the idea of grants, a lot of times when you work with another municipality, it strengthens the grant application because you're having intermunicipal cooperation. Do you know, is this a matching grant or is this, you know, just a direct funding?
I, that's a good question. I just briefly skimmed this, since it just came in last night, didn't see anything about matching, so my understanding, I was thinking direct funding, but I might.
Would you be able to send the information to Dorothea and she can distribute it?
Yeah, yeah, I'll send it to Dorothea, no problem.
Yeah, and, yeah, Susan, Susan Loda and Sophie have been working on some grants, so, you know, they maybe can chime in on that too and along with Dorothea, you know, me obviously too, but, hey, anytime there's a grant, let's take a look. You know, especially with the town, because they're really, you're right, there may be something there.
Sure, I'll send the information around.
Yeah, that'd be great and, and thank, thank you to Dr. Abner too. That's nice to bring it to our attention. Any other member items? Yes, Dan?
I have a few, can be really quick, at the chamber of commerce meeting this morning, they asked what the status was of the Village Merchants Association and I didn't know what to tell them. I know we talked about it maybe a year ago, but just wanted to know if there's anything going on there and how they can help.
Yeah, Susan, Susan Loda actually has been working on that and has contacted people about, you just sort of having an initial, you know, little core committee. I don't have the most immediate information, but we certainly can have her just maybe write a little something up and we can send that out. I know she's had really favorable response, you know, from people, yes, Lily.
Oh, I'll wait till you're done. I do have a question.
Yeah, okay.
About what you just said. Yes, when you say that, I guess I would need some clarification when we're talking about Village Merchants Association. I am still, back in the day when there was Village Merchants Association, that they were an independent group and it had nothing to do with village government. So my question would be, if Susan, and I assume you're talking about Susan Loda, is she doing this as a village employee? Is she forming, I'm unclear as to what, what this, what's being formed and, you know.
This, they would be actually self-contained, what she's trying to do, we're just trying to help put this together with like-minded merchants. This is not something that we're funding or anything like that, but there's opportunities potentially for them, maybe to form a business improvement district, to do other things that really help them support each other in the business community. So I think it's important that we support our businesses in village hall and I think, you know, they've all been receptive, there's not, we're not advocating one way or another and the Chamber of Commerce, as you know, is, is involved in this as well. So that's, that's the dynamic, we just want to be supportive of our businesses and kind of put people together.
Okay, I agree with that and I'd like to have a conversation, perhaps sometime about it so I can be a little bit more clear because right now I'm seeing a blurring of the, of the lines and I don't want us to misstep as far as, you know, legalities are concerned and as far as the chamber is concerned.
Right, right. The chamber's been in the loop, you know.
Okay.
In fact.
But they're saying that they're not, they're saying that they're not.
I don't know why Lisa Schwinkel is, has been contacted about it because she's going to be helping to spearhead this, so I'm a little surprised that, you know, maybe because of the holidays, I know things fell, you know, a little short with the holidays. So as I said, that's all the information I have right now. You can certainly reach out to Susan Loda directly, you know, because she's at the office Monday through Wednesday and maybe get, you know, follow up with any, any additional questions that you have, or I can have her write something up as well, so everybody's kind of.
Okay, I just wanted to be.
Early days, it's just early days, I mean, I think that we're just trying to get the word out, you know, I'm, I'm a little surprised that they, Lisa Schwinkel wasn't, didn't feel that she knew anything about it, because I know Susan's been talking with her.
There's a, there's, for me, there's a, there's a, the way things have handled in the, in the past is the merchants formed their, their, their group and then the village supplied at their request a liaison to that group. So that was the, that was the communication. But to have the village proactively form, which is the way it's sounding, perhaps it's not this way, that's why I'm asking for clarification, that the village is proactively forming a merchants association, I'm, I'm a little.
No, Lily, we're, we're not doing that, I'm going to click, try to be a little more clear. For example, there is a group of merchants right now in Northfield Common that want to do something and look at how they can support each other. As a village, these are businesses in our village. We want to make sure that we pull them all together and just help them connect. They may want to form, as I said, a business improvement district, and there's another type of district. I can't remember what it is, but that's, it's nothing more than helping them with information and connection with each other. They're on their own after that, you know, that's how things, things work, but I think, I don't think it's a negative thing. I don't think that we're doing anything untoward or illegal, and I think we're being, you know, careful about that. So we'll have Susan follow up, so everybody is clear. And as I said, very early days, this is just reaching out. And talking about potential opportunities for the businesses to connect with each other. For example, we have a bridal shop that just opened. We have an event venue that just opened down, you know, where neutral grounds is. You know, there may be some opportunities for those businesses to work together, you know, that's, that's that kind of stuff.
Just please, I understand this perfectly. I absolutely do, and I am, you know. Given what I did for 25 years, you know, you know that I understand.
Yes.
But what I'm saying is, they have done this on their own previously. It doesn't involve us being the ones to facilitate. They came to the village and said, we have this merchants association, we're meeting on Tuesdays, these are some of our ideas. Can we come and present them? And that's, that's how I feel we should function and be involved.
Okay, I'll put you directly in touch with Susan.
That'd be great.
Got to be a great thing to do, and then we can follow up offline.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that, that's, that's, that's just great.
Appreciate it.
Dan, did you have another member item?
Justin has.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess following up on the same topic from trustee Lampier, I would really appreciate hearing a little bit more about this. Before we start taking too much action, and I think that it would be great if Susan Loda or anyone is dedicated to spearheading this. If they came back to the board and if we talked about it in public. I think that if we're taking municipal action to bring businesses together in a certain way, that could be great and it has a lot of promise, but. I think that the, you know, this could be a fine line too. It seems like there is a reason that chambers of commerce are generally separate. From government entities, and there might be some issues with conferring benefits upon specific businesses.
We are giving them absolutely nothing. There is nothing in our budget. It is not even, I think we're somehow going down a little bit of a different path. It's nothing more than trying to make connections. We have so many new businesses coming in, making sure that, you know, there's opportunities. You know, just connecting them with each other, and the Chamber of Commerce has been aware of it. There's been no major action other than Susan just reaching out to other business owners. And saying, are you in the chamber? You know, we hope you can join that. They're doing a lot of good things. It's more about that. And making sure that they're all making those connections at this point. We are not doing anything in any way, shape, or form. That confers any benefit to any business, and I want to make that perfectly clear to everybody. But we will follow up with Susan. Yes.
Yeah, I think publicly would be, just to be clear, publicly would be my preference. I think that this is a municipal function. And I think there's some interest here, so I would like to see that done in a public meeting rather than private sessions.
Okay, all right, and I'm not sure what that, what that looks like when, I mean, what, what, where are you going with this? I just need to, I'd understand.
Sure, I'd like to, it sounds like, you know, Lily is interested in this. I'm interested in this. Maybe some people in the public are. I'd like to hear what we're doing. What are we?
Susan's probably made maybe three or four phone calls to people who are interested and just to say. Anyway, I'm not going to speak for Susan Loda. She can speak for herself and she will. Convey the information to the board, and you're more than welcome to call her and follow up. Okay, and Dan, you had another.
Yeah, I have a few and.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dorothea's hand is up. I'm sorry, I apologize. I thought it was just to close out this issue. Is this a comment?
Sorry, we got two public comments for this issue. Our peers for the relatively small size of the village, how is it local businesses not connect with each other? Why do they need the hand of the village board to assist? It seems very strange. How is it that the challenge is reaching out to each other? And that's it.
I can say that we've gotten feedback, I've gotten feedback from merchants. You know, one of the things I've been doing since I've taken office is I go and I meet with every single business owner. We have a lot of new businesses in the village, and they're so focused, you know, it's COVID, they're trying to make a go of things. And many times, you know, and I've been to a lot of ribbon cuttings too. Many times, you know, they're just focused on what they're doing and they're not exactly sure what else is going on in the village, that's all. And this is in conjunction with the chamber. This is nothing more than that. It's just. Anyway, I feel like we're all stuck over explaining here. We will have.
I'm, I'm in agreement with Lily and Justin that I'd like some more information, would like to discuss. Okay, thanks.
And I've said that a number of times.
Okay.
Yes.
The next one is that, you know, again, I'm in favor of direct negotiation on 75 Monroe. And hope that we are moving toward a solution of that, that is good for the village. Next is that I, I've mentioned this a few times to my fellow trustees and haven't gotten any motion on it. So I'm going to mention it again. I am a little alarmed that I never get any updates on what's going on on the subboards. We have liaisons to the PCBA, to the HPP. I do sometimes get them from Renee on the, on the police. As a liaison to the police, but particularly with the PCBA and the HPP. I don't, I don't have time to attend those meetings, and we have a liaison who really should report back to us what's going on. So a few simple bullets, or if you want to record something, or just some information coming out of those meetings from the liaison would be really helpful. So I'm going to ask for that again. Next, and the last thing, I am a little concerned that we have, we've gotten. Favorable cash back from both COVID-related initiatives from the government. And also better sales tax than we anticipated, and I don't recall as a board that we've talked how to allocate that money. And it just seems like we probably should have those kinds of conversations, and it's strange to me that we're not. So I don't know that this needs to be solved right now, but it's something that's been gnawing at me, and I hope that we can have those conversations. So those were my member items.
I think that's a good point, and I think, you know, we would be talking about that. We have, you know, our budget meetings coming up, and what do we do? You know, we have that additional fund, those additional funds, and also the COVID fund.
That's not for, not for next year's budget, for this year's.
Oh, you're saying for this year's. I see where you're going with it. Okay, okay, we certainly can have those conversations. Yes, Lily.
I'd like to add on to what, what Dan has just brought to our attention. And that is also that we have not received yet our quarterly budget report of, on our last quarter. Which we should have received in September. So we don't even have a really good picture of where we stand fiscally right now, and that's very uncomfortable for me, so.
Yep. And that's, that will be a further discussion. Yeah. Any other member items? Renee, did you have anything? Okay, well, I put down PGI. This is a consulting group. We just received very late today. A thumb drive with the digital information from them. Dorothea, do you have that potentially?
I, I do have that. I'm sorry, I was trying to get your attention. We had a comment from the last round.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, what is specifically meant by the statement by a board member that the board is negotiating with the developer 75 Monroe?
Not what was said at all. Not what was said at all. Just, this trustee is in favor of direct communication with. All parties involved in the 75 Monroe situation. Thanks.
All right, would you like me to go ahead and share the screen? There's two different ones, and figured which one I have.
Let me just give a little background too while you set that up. And Dan, you can chime in too, because you, you also had that tour with GPI in Fairport. GPI is an engineering and design firm. And they were, they actually did pretty much the entire redevelopment of the waterfront for Fairport. And I think have subsequently won two awards. So they reached out to us and wanted us to, you know, to see their work. Dan went on the, looked at it. This is months and months ago, and I did it as well, and have subsequently been in touch with other. With the mayor of Fairport and also with their economic development person who recommends this firm highly and felt that they were good to work with. So this firm reached out to us to say, you know, if you're interested in doing any, anything along your waterfront, your canal front. We would, you know, want you to consider us. So they came in and presented some information about their background. What they do and projects that they've done. And I thought it was an opportunity to bring this back to the board, so you could see, you know, see the material. And also because we do have the Canal Corporation doing the, that re-engineering of the embankment where it's been eroding. They're going to be doing that project hopefully this spring. And the, this would be perhaps an opportunity for us to work with a design firm. To not just have the Army Corps come in and put in more rocks or do whatever they're going to do, but to really stabilize that embankment. And also enhance it in a way that's something that would be of greater public benefit. You know, whether we widen the canal path and make it more of a promenade, or, you know, whatever. I don't, I mean, I don't have these ideas right now. But I think we maybe have an opportunity here, because we have a lot of the engineering being done by the Canal Corporation. Already, and it seems like it's an opportunity for us to at least take a look at this and take a look at what this firm can do. So, Dorothea, do you have the? Okay.
Also, I'm sure they'd meet with any of you.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, this was just an initial meeting.
Oh, yes, I would hope that they would come, bring this to the board.
Yeah.
And then we would see their presentation.
Exactly, but I think, you know, we just wanted to show you what they had given us. I would like to schedule them to come before the board and talk about what they, you know, what they see, think that they can do for us. As I said, this was just an initial meeting, and I, I hope you understand that that's why I'm bringing this back to the board. So if the board is interested in this, we can schedule them.
Okay, I, I, I think that we would.
Oh, Lily, you're muted.
I'm sorry. I would like to suggest that if the board is wanting to consider this, that we would hear from several firms and see their presentations. This is the way we've always functioned. And then, yeah, I would like to.
This is just one that started to reach out.
That'd be great.
I think we're all on the same page, you know, because again, I think this is an opportunity. Because we do have engineering already being done on part of our canal path. Anyway, you know, we don't have to go through all the material. It's nineteen pages and it's late. So, Dorothea, why don't we do this? Would we be, you be able to distribute, distribute this material, sorry, it's late. To the board members for their review?
Yes.
Okay, why don't we do that?
Thank you.
Yeah, this is pretty late. I also, Dan brought up an aspect of the training of the treasurer. And unless there are any other member items or any other comments. What I would like to do would be to make a motion to go into hopefully a brief executive session pursuant to. 105F, this is a discussion of employment and performance of two employees.
I have a second.
And to be clear, there are no other agenda items after this executive session.
No, we would come back and close the meeting. In other words, yeah, so if any, there's nothing else that we're going to be discussing, you know. Other than we're having the executive session. So there's a second?
There was a second.
Okay.
Okay, roll call trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Liken.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Night, all.
Oh, thanks so much, Steve. Thanks for your, your good help tonight. Have a good evening. Okay, so we have to.
Clear the room.
Clear the room, yeah.
Oh, they're helping clear.
I'll go from the bottom up, Dorothea.
Okay.
I'm not logged in as a.
Okay. I think it's just the six of us.
So we should pause the recording?
Yep, I'm getting there now. Hold on.
Oh. Okay, let me do it again. I make a motion that we leave executive session.
Lampier, second.
Okay. Yes, trustee Liken.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
I make a motion that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Liken.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I know, thanks.
Okay, thanks.